Okay, we have quorum this evening. Thank you so much for your patience and thanks for joining us tonight. It is May 14th, 2025. I want to wish everyone a great evening. On behalf of the school committee, I want to welcome and thank you for joining us tonight at this public hearing. This is for the proposed school budget for the FY26 school year. Tonight, we are being broadcast, streamed, and recorded by BevCam. Thank you, BevCam. And I wanted to say, this hearing is an important part of our budget development process. It provides an opportunity for transparency, collaboration, and community input, the three cornerstones of our responsible governance. The budget we are discussing tonight directly reflects our commitment to delivering high-quality education while being mindful stewards of the public resources. As Dr. Chorochek detailed in the April 30th meeting in her full presentation of this budget, we are looking at the reallocation and reassignment in the district as we address our district needs, given the current enrollments, strategic priorities, and other critical needs. We recognize that our budget impacts every student, teacher, staff member, and taxpayer in our community. It shapes the classroom experiences, programs, staffing, facility, and support services. It is a document not just of numbers but of values and priorities. As said before, it's a moral document. We encourage all voices to be heard. Your feedback plays an important role in helping make informed, balanced decisions. Please note that we do have a structured format tonight to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak and that the hearing proceeds respectfully and efficiently. For our agenda tonight, I will ask Superintendent Chorochek for a brief presentation. And following that presentation, we will open the floor to public comments, questions, and other remarks from speakers who have either signed up or emailed us in advance. All speakers must provide their name and address for the record and aim to limit their remarks to three minutes or less. I also want to thank former Ward 4 School Committee member John Mulady for agreeing to mind our clock. As remarks are limited to three minutes, Mr. Mulady will ask you to draw your remarks to a close at that time. Again, thank you for your presence and engagement tonight. We are called to order, and I will take the role. We are joined in person this evening by Mayor Cahill.
Here.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza.
Here.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
Lurinda Visnick.
Here.
And I'm Rachel Abel. Dr. Silva had mentioned he had a prior commitment, and he will join us as soon as plausible. And I'm not sure if Ms. Guelo got stuck in the traffic that seems to be occurring in Beverly right now. Okay, the time is 6:09. We are kicking off first with Dr. Chorochek, if you wouldn't mind giving us a brief overview.
All right, thank you very much. So before we open the public comment portion of the evening, we hope to provide an overview of the budget process and the changes that were part of the FY26 budget. I want to make sure to highlight the fact that the FY26 budget is growing by 9.08%. This increase follows a 7.73% increase in FY25. These are historically large budget increases for any district, and the Beverly Public Schools is grateful to the city for its generous and continued support of our schools. Sorry.
Oh.
Okay, all set? Thank you. Sorry, it was like ringing in my ears. Ready? Awesome. Thank you. 91% of the nearly $13 million in new funds in the past two budget cycles has come from local revenues, which are primarily comprised of local taxes and have limited capacity for growth under Proposition 2.5. While this budget does include reduction of positions, we have carefully designed it to balance the needs of all students across departments and programs with the intent that no one group is disproportionately impacted. These graphs show the increases. These graphs show the increase in the school department funding over the past five years. We look at this in three ways. At the first table, it shows year-over-year percentage growth for the school department appropriated budget and its funding sources. The graph below shows the increase to the city contribution to the school department appropriated budget over that same period. And the bar graph to the right reflects our all-fund summary. During the budget process, we reviewed and budgeted all sources of funding available to the district. This graph also reflects that the bulk of the funding for the Beverly Public Schools comes from local sources. The FY26 budget was built using a data-driven approach to ensure the district's ability to continue to meet the needs of each child. Each building principal and program director was asked to actively participate in the process from the ground up. Rather than relying on previous year's allocations, we looked closely at enrollment trends, student needs, and specific program and building requirements. Staffing levels for the FY26 budget have been carefully developed based upon anticipated enrollment and evolving program needs. Given the reliance on local property taxes to fund budget growth, the school committee and the school administration are mindful in developing a budget we believe will meet the needs of our students that is also fiscally responsible. As the district leadership, principals, and department heads worked through their recommendations, our goal was to maintain the same level of services for our students. There are also recommended changes that help us meet our district priorities, as well as changes that are deemed necessary without impacting student outcomes. Throughout this budget process, you have heard me outline the financial challenges of this budget in great detail. They include the impact of inflation, the increases to wages and benefits, rising special education costs, and expenses that are growing at a rate far faster than revenues. A key driver to decisions regarding resourcing is student enrollment. While our enrollment has remained steady, it is a movement of cohorts throughout the district that drives our change. This slide outlines the guidelines and targets set by the school committee on which this budget was built. In our middle and high school, we also have the benefit of economies of scale, which allows us to utilize our resources efficiently. Here you can see the overall projected enrollment for the 25-26 year. I know these charts are small. These are, none of these are new slides. They are also all available in the district budget book, which you all have available to you and are available on the district website. While our enrollment has remained, oh, sorry. As noted, all class sizes remain below the targets that we just reviewed. One of the first steps in building a budget in any year is to factor in the contractual increases, especially those for wages and benefits, which comprise 83% of the entire school budget. We were fortunate this year that we knew what our contractual obligations would be, which allowed for greater clarity in the budgeting process. Included in this table are increases to health insurance, which at 10% may seem high but is much lower than many comparable communities are experiencing this year. When we consider the special education increases, these are primarily driven by out-of-district placements and their associated costs. These were all detailed in great, in greater detail throughout this past spring and through the budget presentation that I did on the 30th. There are also contractual changes and programmatic obligations that result in increases, some of which are included on this slide. One of the benefits of ESAR funding was that it allowed the district to carry forward balances in entitlement grants and revolving funds, which we were able to use in FY25. These balances were thoughtfully and deliberately used as one-time offsets to help cushion the transition away from the availability of supplemental funding. As we built the FY26 budget, those carry-forward balances had largely been exhausted. This does, in some case, reduce the number of positions that can be offset by grants and revolving funds. Throughout this process and over the course of the current year, we carefully reviewed staffing. Our staffing adjustments benefited from opportunities provided by retirements and natural attrition. These adjustments include reallocation or reassignment of staff to meet student needs. A majority of the anticipated changes will be from positions that are or will be vacant at the end of the year. So this is the summary of the draft appropriated budget. Our FY26 requested city contribution is $69,698,119. The FY26 Chapter 70, this is, was originally built on the House Ways and Means proposed budget. We are aware the Senate has also come forward with that budget, and there is no change to the Chapter 70 funding as was proposed by the House Ways and Means at $15,674,495, making our FY26 draft budget proposal $85,372,614. This represents a city contribution increase from FY25 of $6.44 million and a Chapter 70 increase of $665,550. So this draft appropriated budget increase from the FY25 budget is a $7,105,550 increase. That is a 9.08 increase over the FY25 budget. The graph on this screen reflects the FY26 appropriated budget by function. It just really outlines for you where is our money being spent by function and where is that money going? And as you can see, wages, benefits, and other compensation make up 83% of the appropriated The chart on this screen shows the appropriated budget by cost center. It reflects three years of historicals as well as the current year appropriated budget for the proposed FY26 budget. So this just gives you a snapshot broken down by building and by operational department of our spending and how that $85 million is spread out over the... So that is an overview. I know that that was a very, very over, the high overview of what's going on. As Ms. Abel said earlier, the entire presentation of the budget in much more detail is available, as well as our budget book, which is available online. So I just wanted to give some context to the evening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chorochek. Now I'm going to retrieve our list. If there's anyone else in the room that wishes to sign up, I would ask you to meet Looks like we have 26 in-person speakers that have signed up this evening. I also received one email before the deadline, one email after the deadline that we will read at the end of the in-person speakers. First, if I could call Sarah Vazo to the podium. We do need to press the button to have the green light. Just press it once to turn the green light on. That's for BevCam to be able to pick you up. And also, it seems that we're broadcasting in the room tonight. You will need to provide your name and address for the record. And again, Mr. Mulady is kindly watching the time for you. If you'd like to lower the podium and have a seat, you're welcome to do that as well. It's, uh, it's on the right. Yeah, you don't have to stand at that awkward height. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Sarah Vazo, 41, Brimble Ave. Good evening, members of the board, administrators, and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a district speech-language pathologist here, and I want to address the proposed elimination of a special education teaching position at Hannah Elementary School, the second such cut as in as many years. The district vision emphasizes the desire to maximize academic achievement and personal growth for all students. Cutting one of only three special education teachers contradicts that goal. This is not just a staffing adjustment, it's a reduction in core instructional services for students who rely on specialized instruction to make meaningful progress. I also want to challenge the idea that this is level funding. Level funding implies maintaining current programming and supports. For the second year in a row, the Hannah budget includes the reduction of a special education teacher. Let's be clear, this is a service cut, not a neutral budget move. Special education is not an optional support. It is a right protected by federal law. Reducing staff puts us at risk of noncompliance, increased caseloads, and less individualized support for students. That's not level. It's a step backward. Our three special education teachers currently serve a growing and increasingly complex student population. Reducing this number stretches resources dangerously thin. During this school year, our three special education teachers attended approximately 107 meetings, conducted 58 evaluations for an average total of 319 hours of testing and report writing. That is just over 45 days. All while servicing a combined caseload of 42 students, 20 of whom were added this year. They will be starting this upcoming year with 35 students, an increase from this year's start point. Without sufficient staff, we compromise on co-teaching models, individualized instruction, and the progress of students whose growth depends on these specialized supports. In a time when we're talking about investing in mental health, equity, and academic recovery, now is not the time to dilute the very foundation of these commitments. Keeping three special education teachers is not an extra, it's essential. I urge you to reconsider this cut, align the budget with our stated values, and ensure that level funding truly reflects level services for all students.
Thank you. Next on the list, Cassie Ruel. If you could state your name and address for the record and just press the button once to get it green for us, thank you.
My name is Cassie Ruel, and I live at 18 Roosevelt Ave. I'm a social worker working with some of the most vulnerable families in this community. I'm a parent of a typically developing high school student, the parent of a special-needs preschooler, and the auntie of two non-verbal autistic students at both the preschool and an elementary school. I want to start off by saying thank you to all of the teachers, paraprofessionals, and school staff. Your dedication to the children in this community is commendable, and we are lucky to have you. My youngest son is visually impaired. He is blind in his left eye and has to patch or cover his right eye for extended periods of time during each day. During those times, he is functionally blind and requires a one-on-one support to ensure his physical safety, and I emphasize his physical safety. After nine long months of navigating systemic delays, he finally has access to the vision specialists he needs. These specialists have been working closely with his teacher and paraprofessional team to train an existing staff member in his classroom to serve as his dedicated support person. The proposed budget cuts would eliminate five paraprofessional positions at McEwen. This directly threatens the progress we have made. Without the trained support he requires, my son could be assigned to an untrained, unfamiliar staff member, someone unequipped to safely guide a blind child. This puts him at real risk of serious injury, and he is not alone. It took nine months, nine months of relentless effort by two educated parents who understand how to navigate the IEP process and advocate effectively for their child just to get the appropriate services in place. We knew the language, we knew our rights, we had the time, the knowledge, and the persistence to keep pushing. But what about the families who don't? What about the parents who are working multiple jobs, who are new to the system, or who simply don't know that they're allowed to push back? With these proposed cuts, team chairs and administrators will be forced to become more stringent in what services are approved, not necessarily based on what a child needs, but based on what the budget can bear. It becomes a numbers game, not a question of how can we best support this student. That is not equity, that is not inclusion, that is not how the public education should function. Children receiving special education services are among the most vulnerable in our schools in our community. A typically developing preschooler still needs regular supervision. A preschooler with disabilities may need an adult at arm's length or even hand-in-hand all day. In classrooms where there are multiple children with such needs, one teacher and one paraprofessional In classrooms where there are multiple children with such needs, one teacher and one paraprofessional cannot safely or effectively meet those demands, especially not while ensuring the well-being of every other student in that room. This is not just about my child, this is about all children. These budget cuts do not simply reduce spending, they compromise safety, limit access, and undermine equity. They threaten the very foundation of what public education should provide, a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment for every student regardless of ability. So I speak tonight not only as a parent and a professional, but as a community member who believes deeply in the value of public education. Our children deserve to be safe, they deserve access to the supports they need to thrive, they deserve teachers and staff who are equipped, trained, and valued. We can and must do better.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Andrews.
My name is Stephanie Andrews. I speak to you today not just as the high school German teacher, but as someone who has advocated for the future of our students and our language programs for many years. On January 10th, 2018, I addressed this body about the challenges facing our middle school German program and the need to support it. Seven years later, here I am again, facing the same issue, the proposed decision to cut middle school German next year. This decision will have far-reaching consequences for our students, our school, and the future of our language program. Middle school German students choose to learn this language. They leave the classroom with a passion for culture, an excitement for global perspective, and an appreciation for language. They deserve the opportunity to continue their education in this language, to build on what they've already started, and cutting this program means they will lose that opportunity. The reality is that middle school German program has been under-supported for years. While the high school program has received new materials, the middle school uses decades-old textbooks. The program has struggled with low enrollment due to the constant pressure for students to choose between their interests and the language that they love. However, this issue is not just about the middle school students. If we allow this cut to happen, we aren't just harming those students, we are setting up the high school German program for decline. Without a strong middle school feeder program, it won't be long before enrollment at the high school suffers as well, and we may face the eventual cancellation of the entire German program. One of the things that sets Beverly schools apart from our neighbors is our language offerings. While our neighbors only offer French and Spanish, we also offer German and ASL. At a time when public education and the arts have been under threat, we must invest in a robust and meaningful language education, not cut it. Our students deserve better, they deserve the chance to continue their language education. These passionate seventh graders who have grown to love German class should not be left out next year. I urge you to restore this vital position not just for the seventh graders, who will be affected now, but for every student who follows in their footsteps. Let's not take away the opportunity for that many of our students cherish. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I'd like to remind speakers to provide your addresses as well for the record. Next speaker is Sarah Mitchell.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Mitchell. I'm a kindergarten paraprofessional at the Hannah School. I am here to share the words from my colleague and kindergarten teacher Katie Sarah, who could not be here in person tonight to share this message herself. I live at 14 Memorial Drive. Katie writes, "I have been a teacher at the Beverly Public Schools for over 30 years. For more than 20 of those years, I've taught kindergarten at the Hannah Elementary School, a school and community I care for deeply. I'm sharing my thoughts because I'm deeply concerned about the plan to add an additional kindergarten class at Hannah without also adding a full-time paraprofessional to support it. For the last two, possibly even three decades, full-time paraprofessional support has been the norm in Beverly kindergarten classrooms. Asking that this new class be supported by sharing the three existing paraprofessionals means that none of our classrooms will have full-time support. That would move us away from a model that has long been essential to how we meet the diverse needs of our students and support all learners effectively. As a kindergarten teacher, I cannot overstate how essential paraprofessional support has begun, especially in the wake of the pandemic. The needs in our classrooms have shifted dramatically. We're seeing more trauma, more dysregulation, and greater social, emotional, and academics' needs than ever before. Our youngest learners thrive with consistency, routine, and structure. When paraprofessionals are spread thin or shared between classes, we lose that stability, and so do our students." And it's not just a classroom where their presence matters. In the cafeteria, para-support is critical, especially at the start of the year, when students are still learning how to go through the lunch line, type in a four-digit lunch code, and navigate the lunchroom. Many of our students have food allergies, and while the cafeteria staff does their very best, I find peace of mind knowing that my para, who supports my classroom, knows every child's needs. That is irreplaceable. There's also the practical impact. When paras are shared, there's little to no time for meaningful communication. Paras need time to be informed about IEPs, 504s, medical plans, classroom routines, and expectations. Tonight, I'm asking you to reflect on what's best for our children, what's safest, what's most developmentally appropriate, what has long helped us meet their needs because we knew it was the right thing to do. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your thoughtful care in making this important decision.
Good evening. I'm Laura Newton. I live at 23 Jewett Road, and I'm a speech-language pathologist at Centerville School. I will address a small amount of the district's extremely harmful proposed student-facing cuts. Due to limited time, I will rely on my fellow brave educators and community members to underscore the rest of the budget proposal's many shortcomings. A public records request from January revealed the district possesses no staffing analysis data for special education or any department. The data presented to support the proposed budget is arbitrary. Projected enrollment was shared, but it ignored the diverse needs of students. Class-size recommendations from 20 years ago were cited, guidelines that predate Beverly's shift away from sub-separate special education programming, a good thing, without reducing class sizes or adding adequate special education supports to inclusion settings, a very, very bad thing. Our special education department is in crisis. Cutting even one single student-facing position is not only irresponsible, it is unethical and harms our students. The budget presentation also conflated two essential roles: school adjustment counselors, or SACS, and BPS Connex coordinators. While both are qualified to do many of the same things, their roles are distinct and equally necessary. BPS Connex coordinators work with teachers to identify what every student needs, connect families to community resources, and keep students engaged. Their role is in direct alignment with the district's MTSS initiative. They are also social workers and are able to support school crisis teams or offer counseling when needed. SACS hold a unique role across special education and general education. They are responsible for individualized education program or IEP services, 504 plans, social, emotional support, crisis response, and family outreach. They must have protected time to deliver mandated IEP services and also the flexibility to respond to unpredictable, often urgent, needs of students in crisis. Our program-specific SAC works with very young students whose needs are so significant they are unable to participate in the general education setting. Beyond therapy sessions, she must be a consistent calming present, offering co-regulation, trust, and consistent care paramount to the program's success. SACS cannot replace coordinators, and coordinators cannot replace SACS. Eliminating or merging these roles would dismantle critical student support. Parents of Beverly's diverse learners, I am speaking as an educator and a mother. Our children face unique challenges, and it is the district's legal and moral obligation to support them early and intensively. At this moment, when the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and diversity, equity, inclusion programs are under attack by our federal government, it is shameful that Beverly is minimizing the needs of our students. Our children are capable, competent, and essential to the future of our community. Helping them communicate, learn, and thrive fills me with immeasurable joy and is essential to the fabric of my being. I will never stay silent while their education or their future is under threat. School committee members, I urge you to vote down this budget. Please take these public comments seriously and reflect on how your decisions impact the children you were elected to protect. Administrators, go back to the drawing board with all stakeholders and build a budget grounded in real data and guided by the truth that our students are not enrollment numbers. They are human beings we love and believe in, and they deserve our best. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Liz Maur.
Good evening. Liz Maur, 78 Water Street. Good evening. My name is Liz Maur. I want to begin my remarks by referring to a question asked at the April 30th School Committee Budget Meeting. Ms. Robinson, you asked a really thoughtful question. You asked, in total, how many people after retirements, attrition, et cetera? How many people will be out of jobs? In answer, Dr. Trocheck responded in summary that there would be three to four staff on whom budget cuts would have a direct impact, and the rest of the positions were vacancies due to retirements and attrition. On April 29th, five teachers at Beverly High School were told that their contracts would not be renewed for the following year. Those people were a math teacher, a history teacher, a wellness teacher, and two special education teachers. If you refer back to the high school slide from that April 30th meeting, you'll find that almost every one of those aligns with a position that was cut from the budget. At the middle school, three teachers were given the same message, and the next day, they too saw their positions cut at the budget meeting. Those positions weren't vacancies. There were eight of your kids' teachers who were non-renewed and given the party line of, "You're just not the right fit for the school at this time." They were removed from their positions so that less than 36 hours later, Dr. Trocheck could claim that these budget cuts weren't hurting people, real people who invest their time and energy into this district. And notably, these were all student-facing positions. I have had the absolute honor of co-teaching math at the high school for the past three years, which has really improved my addition skills. If we take five from the high school, add three at the middle school, plus the three to four that Dr. Trocheck mentioned, and all round up to four, we're looking at at least 12 staff out of jobs. The BTA has requested information for more complete understanding of the situation, but they've been met with no reply so far. In the meantime, with the information we have, Ms. Robinson, I'd like to present an alternate answer to your April 30th question. These budget cuts directly impact at least 12 staff members, myself included, with who knows how many more to come. Citizens of Beverly deserve honesty and transparency, and the educators who work tirelessly on behalf of this community deserve better than being called vacancies. Thank you for your time.
It's already on, right? Good evening. My name is Judy Martin. I live at 8 Palmer Road in Beverly, and I'm here to talk about the budget recommendations for the preschool for next year. I've been in front of you before, and I thank you for listening tonight. I am currently a paraprofessional at the preschool, and I will try to talk really fast. We currently have 11 classrooms at the preschool with 22 para-positions, two paras per classroom. Right now, we have 20 paras because two paras resigned during the year and they weren't replaced. The budget put forth by administration has next year looking like the following, and I've tried to quote from the slide. The budget recommends staffing changes to allow for one dedicated paraprofessional per classroom, two dedicated paraprofessionals for the intensive classroom, as well as four additional paraprofessionals to provide additional support as needed, which adds up to 16 paraprofessionals in total. We currently have 22 positions for paraprofessionals at the preschool. What does this mean? We're going to start the year with 16 paraprofessionals? 10 out of 11 classrooms have one paraprofessional, and four paras are floating between 10 classrooms as the additional support? Paraprofessionals help teach the skills at the preschool. In inclusive classrooms, you have to have enough support. You've heard that already tonight. How does this work? How does this help a special-needs preschool make sure that all of their children are learning and supported and safe? How is this addressing the increasing number of behavioral issues that we see increase every year? It's projected that eight students per class will start the year. That doesn't take into account the unexpected level of need per classroom and take it out of the equation. Some classes will start with a low enrollment and low support needs, but others with higher enrollment and higher support needs. There's also a screening to add children to every preschool class except intensive, done in early September, which will immediately increase these class sizes. Before school even starts, the screening is done, so within the first week or two of school in September, our enrollments are already getting higher from the numbers that you saw on the slide. This model is unsafe, it is not sustainable, it does not give the children the supports that they need, it will burn out the staff. This year has already taken a toll. It is interesting that you are finally adding the therapeutic support position so desperately needed at this school, yet at the same time severely reducing the staff that work so closely with these children every day, whose constancy allows trust to build, familiarity to grow, to foster learning. You know how much consistency is needed for these children in particular, yet this model is exactly the opposite. And... Can I finish?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And frankly, we're already using this model at the preschool to a lesser degree because we are already understaffed and we cannot get enough substitutes. I know you've heard that before as well. Paras are pulled to different classrooms all the time. There are safety issues almost every day, and that is with most classes having two paras. Some should have three for the learning needs that they require, but they don't. So under this model, what happens when class sizes increase? You're going to hire mid-year? Who takes a job knowing it will be eliminated at the end of the school year? How will hiring be decided? Using numbers? So when 12 students are in each class, then we'll add to staff? Or is it going to be a more subjective decision? That's not explained. We also, as I stated, have substitute issues. We simply don't have enough. We never have enough substitutes for coverage at the preschool. So why would you recommend understaffing from day one, knowing how much bigger this problem will be when we have no substitutes when needed? I don't understand how this model could even be viewed as a possibility. It does not work, it will hurt our youngest learners, it will lead to safety issues, and as a special-needs preschool, it will not send children on to elementary school programming with the foundation they need to succeed and learn. I am begging you, as the parent of children who went through this program, but a very different program many years ago, and as a current paraprofessional employed... different program many years ago, and as a current paraprofessional employee of the school system, please do not approve this model. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Naeda. Caroline, is it Naeda?
Yada.
Yada, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Caroline Yada, 78 Water Street. I am a special education teacher at Centerville Elementary in our student support program. As many of you know, SSP supports some of our district's most vulnerable students, students with social-emotional disabilities and behavioral needs. I have worked with this population for 11 years. It makes sense that I see supporting mental health and the social well-being of our students as a priority, as I've dedicated my career to it. On April 30th, Dr. Trocheck presented a slideshow on the budget process. The heading on the second slide was, quote, "FY26 Priorities," end quote. I was heartened to see that the very first bullet point on that slide was social-emotional/mental health. So I was a bit confused as the presentation progressed to see the proposed changes and cuts to positions that have a great impact on students' mental health. How does cutting five para-positions at the preschool, but claiming we will magically hire them back as the year goes on and we get more students when we get more students? How does that improve the social-emotional well-being of our youngest learners and ones with disabilities? How does cutting multiple BPS Connex coordinators, namely at the middle school and high school levels, improve the social-emotional well-being of our students? How does cutting special education teachers, one of which is in the same program I teach in at a different level, improve the social-emotional well-being of our students with disabilities? The hypocrisy is clear. Mental health is a nice priority to put down on paper, but the projected changes and cuts to the positions utterly contradict the district's own stated goals. Mayor Cahill and members of the school committee, we know that Beverly deeply values its public schools. I myself am a product of these schools. I am calling on each of you tonight to restore these positions and support a budget that values all students. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Sam Allison.
Good evening. I am Samuel Allison of 78 Water Street. I'm here on behalf of my children, the students of the High School Student Success Program, of whom I am the social studies teacher. If you aren't familiar with our program, we enroll students with emotional disabilities and significant trauma histories who need our smaller class sizes and our therapeutic staff to be successful in school. Our program literally changes lives. I have seen miracles happen in just my two years here. Students who haven't been to school in a year have perfect attendance when they come to our program. Kids who get into yelling fights with any and every adult in their life come to our program, and they learn to be in control of themselves. Students who didn't have a chance to graduate high school come to our program and leave with a diploma and a future. How do we do it? Compassion, patience, and an immense amount of hard work. We show the kids what it's like to have adults who are there for them. We do it by building lasting relationships with students who have been wronged by so many adults in their lives. We teach them that it's okay to be okay, that it can be safe to trust, and that they are worth more than the hardships they have endured and the disabilities they carry with them. I have had one student tell me, "This is the first time teachers have treated me like a human being." Another looked me... Another looked me in the eye and said, "You're my dad now." We show the kids what it's like to have adults in school who understand them, respect them through all of their struggles, and who they can rely on. Except that's not true anymore. Two weeks ago, I was informed that my position is being cut and that the district intends to run the program with three teachers instead of four next year. I am not overstating when I say this will be devastating to the effectiveness of the student success program. Many of my kids, they're on the margin. Through no fault of their own, their lives have not pointed them in a positive direction. They rely on me and my colleagues to be there for them and to make school a safe place for them to be. And we cannot do that without a full staff. Without enough adults to support our kids, some of them will lose a future. By cutting my position, you are cutting off opportunities for some of our most vulnerable students to have better lives. But the problem here isn't just about the impact it will have on students we're supporting. It's also about money. The Beverly High School Student Success Program cannot run with one less teacher. We have too many kids, and your other options are not cheap. Maybe the district administration will try to push some of our kids out of the program. You'll end up with every parent calling a lawyer. Maybe district administration will finally agree to outplace some of our highest-need kids. Do you know how much outplacement costs? It's a whole lot more than one teacher's salary. Or maybe the district will do the same thing as last year, when you attempted to cut two of my colleagues. You'll accept reality at the very last minute and try to hire whoever they can find for a position that very few people are willing to do. And even if you find someone, not only will the district have saved zero money, it will make our kids, who need stability as much as they need food and water, have to adjust to an entirely new dynamic again, just like last year, when the same thing happened. I am embarrassed that I have to stand here, well, sit here, and explain this to you, especially because I personally know multiple teachers and administrators in my building already have. But they have gotten no response. Unless there is some secret plan the school committee is not telling anyone, this is going to cause real problems for the district come September, and it is a self-inflicted wound. I'm almost done. Six weeks from now, none of this will be my problem anymore. I will grieve leaving my students behind, but I will go find another way to make a good impact on this world. Instead, it will be your problem, my colleague's problem, and my students' problem as they prepare to return to a school that has broken its promise to support them. In the opening statement, someone up here said, "This budget was carefully crafted not to disproportionately affect one group of students," but that is exactly what it is doing. It is affecting our most vulnerable, who cannot fight back against it. So I am here speaking for them today. Come to your senses, everybody. Undo this cut before you collapse one of your most impactful programs. Beverly's kids deserve it.
Our next speaker is Olivia Wilson.
Olivia Wilson. And we're also trying to adjust the HVAC.
Olivia Wilson, 5 Porter Terrace. My name's Olivia Wilson, and I have been a special education teacher in the Student Success Program at the middle school for the past six years. As Sam said, SSP is our therapeutic program specifically designed for students with emotional disabilities, mental illness, trauma, and behavioral needs. I love my job and my students, but I am extremely concerned about the continued budget cuts to special education, especially SSP, over the last two years. Last year, we had four teachers supporting 28 students in the middle school. After the cuts last year, we lost one teacher. This year, we're ending with three teachers and 27 students. Midway through the year, my paraprofessional left and was never replaced. The paracut for next year is my para. Now you're cutting Sam, an SSP teacher at the high school who cares deeply about the same students I do. How am I supposed to feel excited for my students to transition to high school, knowing the support they need will not be there? These students, who already carry more than any person should, are being failed again. They'll be walking into a crisis on day one. This work is emotionally and physically demanding. You are cutting someone who applied specifically to work with students who need consistent, compassionate, and trauma-informed care. When I was hired, I was asked three separate times if I really wanted to work in this program. No one ends up working in SSP by accident. The people who work in this program choose to be here. We show up for the kids who have been let down, forgotten, pushed aside over and over again. We keep hearing about the importance of safe schools, but actions speak louder than words. You're cutting staff from a very program designed to keep students and staff safe. Without proper staffing, this program becomes dangerous. Students and educators have been hurt, and they will continue to be hurt. Some of our students have experienced unthinkable trauma. Many come to school because SSP is where they feel seen, supported, and safe. These students, often misunderstood or overlooked, are some of the most resilient, brilliant, funny kids I've ever met. They don't need to be fixed; they need to be believed in. And yet, this district continues to take advantage of the fact that these students' families often can't fight. Many are focused on basic survival, finding housing, food, stability. The cuts keep coming because the system counts on their silence. I'm here to speak for them. These students deserve the same shot at success as every other child. Sam said it best. The cuts could collapse one of the most impactful programs we have. Why are we taking away from the kids who need us the most? Please fund our program and fully fund our schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrea Sherman, and on deck is Paul Drake.
Andrea Sherman, 78 Water Street. Good evening, members of the school committee. I am confident that we are all here because we share the desire to offer the children of Beverly the best possible experience each day they are in our schools. And I'm here tonight to express serious concerns regarding the growing class sizes in our middle school global applications. These are generally known to the public as specials, such as art, music, physical education, health, technology. While I believe that all subjects are important, these are subjects that are often a haven for students who may not love school. We have an obligation to teach the whole child, and that is not possible without robust programming in place so that all learners can grow. I spoke about this exact concern last year, and I am sad to report that class sizes in global apps have not improved. During last year's hearing, I shared a basic math ratio. If there are 16 grade six classrooms funneling into 11 global apps classes, those comfortable class sizes of 20, the ones we've seen on the budget slides, balloon to 30 or more really quickly. What message are we sending if only certain subjects have best practice sizes? What message are we sending when students repeat our classes because there is no other offering for them to take? It's certainly not a message any of us should feel good about. Current wellness classes hover right at 30, one teacher, fully integrated, often without support needed. The research is clear: Students thrive when they have voice, choice, and relationships with their teachers. We want this to be the experience for our students, but with growing class size and increasing need, we're risking safety, diminishing the quality of our offerings, and shortchanging the awesome kids who come here every day. The absence of any allocation in the current budget to address this critical issue should concern all of us. Despite clear evidence of the problem, there appears to be no plan for adding staff, reducing class sizes, or ensuring that our GAs are properly resourced. I respectfully urge the school committee to take action by prioritizing funding for additional staff in the middle school, reevaluating the current budget to allocate necessary resources for these courses, and please engage directly with the teachers who teach specials to understand their challenges and potential solutions. Our students deserve a safe, supportive, enriching learning environment in every class they attend, and I trust that you will give this matter the urgent attention it requires. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks. We have Paul Drake, and on deck is Jana Dwyer.
Hey, everybody. Paul Drake, I live at 8 Bartlett Street here in Beverly. Been a paraprofessional at Centerville for about nine years. Going to start with a bit of a feel-good story. The past five years, I've been able to have the privilege of, starting with a kindergarten class, each year I was assigned to the next grade with that class. So I've moved with that class for five years. So now I'm with my fourth graders, and I can't believe in a few weeks I'm going to have to say goodbye to them. I'm getting them ready for their last MCAS test tomorrow. They've really risen to the challenge, and I'm really proud of them. Two years ago, I was in a classroom, I was assigned to a student that had IEP, and that was lovely work. But through the course of the year, another student had huge, intense, probably traumatic responses, acting out in class, throwing chairs around, and it was a huge curveball for us. We were able to manage it because we had two adults in the classroom, the teacher and myself. I was able to help monitor the student, help them calm themselves, and invite them and guide them back into the classroom and allow the rest of the students to continue their learning. That student was not on anyone's list in a formal way like that. I was assigned to that class for another student, and that's often the case with our paraprofessionals. We are in a classroom, one student, two students, I'm in an inclusion classroom this year, but all the students in that classroom benefit because all of those students have needs and they're hungry for relationship. We're talking about social-emotional goals. I've said before, this body and before the city council numerous times, that if we're serious about our social-emotional goals, we have to be serious about relationship, and that only happens with people. We cannot achieve those goals if we cut the people that our students rely on. You heard it so many times from previous folks who spoke, the consistency is needed. It's incredible to offer five years of consistency to the class that I have now, to the grade. I'm happy to say that the student that I had two years ago is in my class again this year, and they're doing fine because of that consistency. Let's feel good by moving together towards the same goals instead of moving back. So as like everyone said, we urge you to reverse these cuts and find a way to deliver on the goals for our students. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jana Dwyer, 78 Water Street. Good evening. I am a counselor at Beverly Middle School. This is my seventh year in the district, and I'm also a product of Beverly Public Schools. I am concerned about the lack of compliance to mandated services we provide to our special education students, and you should be too. Paraprofessionals have a crucial and critical role in our schools. They deliver B-grid services, meaning they support special education students in the inclusion setting. Every IEP includes a service delivery grid stating how much support, measured in minutes, each student is to be provided each week in order to be able to access the curriculum. Once an IEP is signed by the Guardian, these services are mandated by federal law. Many of our IEP students cannot access the curriculum without a second staff member in their classroom to support them academically, socially, and emotionally. During the strike, management told the mediator that when paraprofessionals are out, substitutes fill in for them. This is not true. Quite frequently, paraprofessionals are utilized as subs for general education teachers, leaving the classrooms to which they are typically assigned without a second staff member to support their IEP students. We have collected the data from BMS each and every school day this year. In the 154 school days between the start of the year and today, on 767 occasions, a paraprofessional was pulled from their role to substitute teach for the entire day. paraprofessional was pulled from their role to substitute teach for the entire day. On 367 occasions, a paraprofessional was absent without a sub assigned. Additionally, on 194 occasions, a special education teacher was absent for the full day, and there was no substitute for that special education teacher. This means, on average, there have been 8.3 vacant special education positions each day of the school year. So, what does this actually mean? Let's say a student on an IEP is in a learning center, and let's say their IEP requires three hours of inclusion support each day. If the para assigned to the student's class is pulled once a week, a conservative estimate, then, over the course of the school year, they have missed 92.5 hours of supported learning? This will not be made up. Let's say each special educator works with eight students a day, eight students a day, and let's say those eight students have two hours of support each day. This is extremely conservative; it's likely two to three times this. But if each special educator had eight students with two hours of support each day, then our students would have missed 20,000, 528 hours of supported learning this year. To be clear, this is not the fault of the BMS administrators. They are doing the best they can, piecing together classroom coverage each and every day, but these numbers don't even include paras pulled to cover for teachers attending IEP meetings; they don't include when a teacher is out for an hour or a half day; and they don't include when a para is out for an hour or a half day. Our administrative assistants are often subbing for up to several hours a day; our administrators themselves are covering classes to make sure that each classroom has coverage. We are chronically out of compliance, and it's not sustainable or legal. Despite all of this...
I know you're the... So, I... I will end with the fact that this is getting better. We started at 10.7 vacant positions a day, and in May so far it's 6.1, but we're averaging 8.3 roles that should be legally filled are vacant every day, and we haven't been staffed a single day this school year. So how can you recommend cutting one teacher position and one para position from this school? It is irresponsible. Please make this right.[756.12][756.12][applause]
We have Dan McGloin, then on deck Christina Van Der Slies and Lisa Mooney.
Good evening. Dan McGloin, 78 Water Street. So, I am Dan McGloin. I'm a learning center teacher here at Beverly Middle School on the Eight Hail team. I'm also the chair of the Beverly Teachers Association Special Education Committee. I'm here tonight on behalf of my fellow committee members and union colleagues to formally sound the alarm regarding the ongoing crisis facing special education in Beverly Public Schools. Recently, our committee conducted a survey of all special education staff in BPS. The results overwhelmingly identified several recurring themes across the district: inadequate student services and programming, teachers, liaisons, and other support staff working with unsustainable workloads, insufficient staffing, and inconsistent management practices. Our committee had originally hoped to address these concerns with district administration prior to addressing this body tonight. That changed two weeks ago, when the proposed cuts began to paint a disastrous image for special education in BPS. As you will see from the petition we share with you tonight, signed by nearly 500 direct-service educators in BPS, our staff and students in special education face serious challenges. These challenges will only be compounded by further cuts, which will have an outsized and negative impact on special ed. These proposed cuts include elimination of five paraprofessionals from the preschool, special educator cuts at the middle school and at the high school, perhaps more too, as we've requested information regarding the full scope of these cuts and have yet to receive it. Impacts on special ed services are deeply felt by all students and staff in both general education and special education. On behalf of the nearly 500 educators who have signed this petition, we are calling on you, the school committee, to reject these proposed cuts and to act without delay to address the concerns raised in this petition. Thank you.[903.43][903.43][applause]
My name is Christina Van Der Slies, 78 Water Street. My speech tonight is actually a letter to our incoming superintendent. Dear Dr. Peter Cushing, welcome to Beverly. During your interview, you spoke with genuine passion for both this community and the role of superintendent itself. What stood out most to me was your strong emphasis on transparency, teamwork, and collaboration. However, the actions taken by the current district leadership leave me deeply concerned that we are moving backward rather than progressing toward the shared vision you articulated. Dr. Cushing, I am proud to teach at the largest middle school in Massachusetts. We are preparing to welcome 364 incoming fifth graders in the fall, to add to our population of almost 1,400. Despite this significant enrollment, the proposed cuts at BMS include an English-language learner teacher, a counselor, paraprofessionals, a learning center teacher, an assistant principal, and the complete elimination of the German program. These reductions will greatly impact our capacity to support students effectively and equitably. Eliminating a grade-level EL teacher is akin to removing an offensive guard, someone essential to navigating and protecting some of our most vulnerable students as they move through the complex pathways of the U.S. educational system. Cutting a learning center teacher is like taking a field without a fullback, removing the targeted support and critical momentum that helps students advance towards success. With these cuts come large caseloads that are simply untenable for teachers. Just as a successful team relies on a skilled play caller to guide strategy and execution, our assistant principals serve that critical role at BMS. Eliminating one of these positions would leave a single assistant principal responsible for more than 700 students across two grade levels. We've experienced this before with an even smaller student population, and it proved unsustainable and ineffective. Leadership at this scale is not just challenging; it compromises the support and structure our students and staff depend on. Fully staffing the largest middle school in Massachusetts should be viewed as a strategic priority, driven by the evolving and growing needs of our student population, rather than reduced to a calculation based solely on attrition. But, Dr. Cushing, I want you to know that cut positions are just part of our current reality. District leadership is forcing us to bargain a middle school and high school schedule that was made with zero teacher input and a real potential to increase class sizes. They are asking us to play a game using a playbook we had no part in writing, and now they expect us to run the plays without question. This is not transparent, and this is certainly not collaborative. Lastly, Dr. Cushing, it's encouraging to hear your expressed commitment to community healing following the challenges of this school year, a commitment that, to date, has been noticeably absent at the leadership level. Just as a successful team must regroup, rebuild trust, and refocus after a tough season, we are hopeful that, under your leadership beginning in 48 days, we can begin those essential conversations that foster open dialogue and true collaboration among all stakeholders. We are so ready to work together as a unified team to drive meaningful progress and lasting excellence in the Beverly Public Schools. Go Panthers! Sincerely, Christina Van Der Slies, BMS civics teacher.[1142.23][1142.23][applause]
Hi, good evening. I'm Lisa Mooney, and it's 20 Eisenhower Way? Or Ave, I should say. Eisenhower Ave. Yes, that's it. I listened to the budget presentation and some of the positions that are being eliminated. Nothing was mentioned, that I recall, about the float nurse position, and I can't tell you how critical that is. Because when we have a nurse out, we have to pull a nurse from another building, and you can't pull a nurse from any of the elementary schools because there's only one nurse in the building. So the nurse is being pulled from the middle school, or usually from the high school. That leaves one nurse to 1,200 students, and that's not even including the staff. It's so unsafe. It's against state regulations, and I'm really concerned. Safety-wise, I think the district is looking down the road, a liability issue when something happens, and it's really something that needs to be addressed. They can't just eliminate a float position. You might say, "Oh, well, why don't we get a substitute list going?" It's not that easy for a nurse. It's not like you can get a substitute for a para, or, well, it sounds like that's not easy either, or a teacher. I mean, to get a substitute for a nurse, it has to be someone that has an active Massachusetts nursing license; they have to be an RN with a four-year degree; they're supposed to have the Mass Health course programs completed. And not to mention, for the pay they're gonna get per hour to go into a school with students that have multiple health issues that they know nothing about, and to give out medications, a nurse in their right mind wouldn't do it. So, it only seems advantageous for the district to have these float nurses available so that when there are nurses out, when there is field trips, fall, spring, when we have so many schools going out at the same time, we have to send nurses. There are students that are diabetics, that have G-tube feeds, that have seizure precautions; there's so many things that we need to send a nurse. There aren't that many of us. We can't do it. So, I'm saying to you, it is a huge safety issue, and it really needs to be addressed, and I'm asking you to please do not eliminate the floating position. They're needed.
Okay. Our next speaker is Allison Nichols, followed by Chris Melanson and Scott Sutera.
Good evening. My name is Allison Nichols, 2 Foster Drive, Beverly. I am a seventh-grade Spanish teacher here at Beverly Middle School, and I'm here tonight to speak not just as a language teacher, but as a passionate advocate for multilingual education and expanded opportunities for all of our students. I am deeply concerned about the proposed elimination of the German program at our middle school. While I teach Spanish and am deeply committed to the success of that program, I firmly believe that cutting German, or any world language offering, is a step in the wrong direction for our students and for our community. Middle school is a time when students are just beginning to discover who they are and what interests them. It is our job as educators and leaders to open doors, not close them. Offering multiple languages gives students the opportunity to find a path that resonates with them. Many students connect with German more than Spanish or French. Why should we take that chance away from them? Eliminating German not only limits choice, it also diminishes the strength and diversity of our world language program as a whole. A robust program with multiple options shows students that we value global awareness and cultural understanding. It sets the tone that we are preparing them for this world, not just checking a box for graduation requirements. Over the 12 years that I have been in this district, I have seen firsthand the world language department go from a rigorous, well-respected, cohesive, and supported program to one that is undervalued, undersupervised, and treated as optional. Despite the many challenges that our department has faced, all three of our language programs have continued to thrive. In fact, as many of you know, each program has gone above and beyond by offering our students travel experiences, entirely because of the dedication of our teachers, who have volunteered their own vacation time. These trips have been life-changing for our students, giving them a chance to apply their learning in real-world settings and come home with a new sense of confidence, independence, and perspective. That kind of commitment doesn't happen in a program that's failing; it happens in a program worth protecting. If anything, now is the time to expand language opportunities, not reduce them. In a time when divisiveness is all too common, language learning helps students build empathy, grow curiosity, and expand their perspective. These are exactly the kind of values that we should be investing in as a school district. I respectfully urge you to reconsider this decision. As school committee president Abel said tonight, "The budget is a direct reflection of our district's morals." Let's commit to growing opportunities for students, not shrinking them. Thank you for your time and for your dedication to high school.[1534.41][1534.41][applause]
All right. Good evening. My name is Chris Melanson, 24 West Dane Street, and I'm a proud Beverly resident and sixth-grade teacher at Beverly Middle School. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, everybody. Beverly Middle School is suffering from an identity crisis, not unlike a middle school or navigating adolescence. But this isn't year one. We are seven years into the five-to-eight model, and I wish the growing pains would stop. There is still constant shifting of staff, ebbing and flowing of curriculum, changing schedules, space limitations, and policy pivots. These fluctuations have left educators, students, and families longing for something middle schoolers themselves crave, and that is stability. Thankfully, BevCam, an amazing and valuable resource for our city, thank you BevCam, they record everything, and those that know me know that I'm a BevCam superfan. I puff the popcorn for Lorinda's F&amp;F Committee, bring out the fancy hors d'oeuvres for Cecil, and don't even get me started on a spicy Hall-Witaker Bridge community chat. But recently, I went down the rabbit hole and re-watched a 2014 community forum held at North Beverly Elementary. Many of you in the room tonight were in that room. That night, the five-to-eight model was pitched with an overarching theme being opportunity. Opportunity for students to access foreign language for four years; even Mandarin was brought up, but now we're cutting German. Opportunity for flexible learning spaces, courtyards, makerspaces, outdoor amphitheaters; I mean, I was pumped as a fifth-grade teacher, ready to come up here. But today, those are largely inaccessible or repurposed. The maker space near my classroom is gone. I used it in year one; it's no longer there. It's a classroom. I can't use the courtyards; it disrupts adjacent classes. The amphitheater is blocked by overflowing gym classes, transitions, and a building project at the Coming Center. Chorus class is in the auditorium because there's no other space. I needed it the other day for my Star Wars Day; couldn't get it. The library and the green screen room are off-limits during our two-month MCAS season, and even my own staff room was being utilized last week due to small group testing. If this is what opportunity looks like, we need to ask, are four grades truly sustainable at BMS, given our space constraints? We need to seriously start to consider thinking bigger as the next administrative regime transitions in. And now we're facing another shift: a proposal to eliminate two-person teaching teams, one in grade five and one in grade six, and replace them with three-person teams. This means six teams at each grade will be two-person, and one will not. This creates an imbalance, both structurally and emotionally, for students and teachers. I currently serve on Team Puma, one of our two-person teams. I've seen firsthand the power of this model, stronger teacher collaboration, clear academic focus, and tighter emotional support for our students. Our MCAS scores in sixth grade consistently exceed state averages, not by accident, but by design. Smaller class sizes aren't just convenient; they are critical. They allow teachers to build meaningful relationships, provide timely interventions, differentiate instruction, and connect with the whole child. When class sizes grow, those moments get diluted: less individual feedback, less personalized instruction, more stress, and more burnout. And burnout is real. Three-person teams often shoulder heavier workloads, with more students, more planning, and greater coordination challenges. In a profession already struggling with recruitment and retention, why introduce a model that makes the job harder? We must also think about equity. Will students placed on the lone three-person team have the same middle school experience as their peers? Will they feel the same sense of belonging? Will their teachers have the same capacity to meet their needs? What will special ed look like? Will these three-person teams have a program attached? If not, how will the other special ed students be placed? We say we believe in equity. This plan introduces inequity. So let me ask plainly: are we a district that believes in two-person... So let me ask plainly, are we a district that believes in two-person teams in grades five and six or not? If we do, and I believe we should, then let's prioritize keeping them. This isn't about persevering, preserving tradition for tradition's sake. It's about protecting a model that works. It's about what is truly best for kids. I know my time is up, so I'll just conclude. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and hope we can reconsider. Thank you.
As we welcome Scott Sutera to the microphone, we also have on deck Mike Collins, Seamus -- I can't read the handwriting. M.R.?
Rock.
Come on, John.
Rock.
That's why I just called you Seamus.
Thanks. And then after that is Casey Fiore.
My name is Scott Sutera, and I'm the caretaker of Room 113, right here at 502 Cabot. I've had the tremendous opportunity and pleasure of working with some incredible families and students over my career at BMS. However, I'm an outsider. I can get in my car and drive down the street and never come back. But I don't want to do that. I love it here. I love the Beverly community. I have told numerous parents, some of them in this room right now, that I would rather be at my room than in Aruba. And I mean it. And when they meet me, they realize I mean it. There's no place I'd rather work. If I have to work, I want to work in BMS. I stand before you as a 5th grade teacher, used to be 6th, now 5th, representing my colleagues who are deeply concerned about the pros tradition from a two-person team to a three-person team. We understand that this proposal is driven by budgetary constraints, but we believe that the educational costs far outweigh the financial savings. In our current two-person teams, we effectively build strong relationships with our students, fostering trust and understanding that are essential for their success. We know their strengths. We know their struggles, and the strategies that we need to use to help them thrive. But under a three-person team model, teachers will be stretched thin, responsible for more students, and struggling to build these same meaningful relationships. Two-person teams work. We have proven this time and time again here at BMS. We need to maintain this model. Now, I trust my BMS administrators, and I know they are doing what's best built on the budget constraints. But I'm asking the school committee to please fund two teachers in 5 and 6 to implement two-person teams throughout the grade levels. I don't want mine to be moved around for my little piece of BMS. I need more, we need more funding to help 5 and 6. The transition to the middle school is very difficult. It is very hard for these guys. We need to help them as best we can. Thank you very much.
My name is Mike Collins. I live at 67 Lovett Street here in Beverly, and I am the 6th grade counselor here at Beverly Middle School. Tonight, I'd like to speak about our building administration. As they would likely tell you, I have never had a problem being vocal, and at times critical of some of their decisions. But tonight, I want to focus on the work that they do every single day. This year, I've had the privilege of working as the 6th grade counselor alongside Mr. Twombly, our 6th grade assistant principal. Every day, I've watched him tirelessly support both students and staff. From the moment he walks into the building until the moment he leaves, he is constantly in motion. He's often one of the first to arrive and one of the last to leave. Throughout the day, you'll find Mr. Twombly supporting students with behavior, helping with assignments, managing transitions, and meeting with teachers, parents, and administrators. On some days, he's called to assist during a crisis and manage countless other issues. And none of this is unique to Mr. Twombly. I've seen all of our assistant principals, along with Lisa Oliver, Edgar DeLeon, do the same. They don't take breaks, and they work tirelessly, day in and day out, to support the students and educators in this building. They are not perfect, and like all of us, they have made mistakes. But they show up, and this year, they've had the added responsibility of helping our staff heal. I've heard a lot about healing this year, and understandably so. There's been a lot said and done that has caused pain, some from you in this body and some from those of us wearing red, myself included. But there's the difference. Those of us wearing red, along with our building administrators, have been the ones doing the work to heal. We've had difficult conversations, exchanged awkward glances, and shared honest and sometimes painful truths with one another. Through it all, Lisa, Edgar, Greg, Jamie, Derek, and Adam have continued to show up, often having to answer for poor decisions and harmful policies that they had no part in creating. The job of an assistant principal is demanding, even on a good day, and that's when we're fully staffed. When one AP is out, there is no substitute. Their responsibilities must be absorbed by others who are already stretched thin. The impact of even one absence trickles down to the counselors, teachers, and most importantly, the students. Services are missed, behaviors go unaddressed, the work piles up. We do our best to manage, but I can't begin to imagine what it will look like if we are reduced to just three assistant principals. Their absence will be felt. It won't lead to better outcomes, and the teachers and students who were elected to serve will suffer, plain and simple. So I'm asking you, do what makes sense. Fund our schools, staff our schools, and help us heal. Thank you, guys.
I live at 14 Columbus Avenue. I'd like to start by adding that I am also an assistant principal in a different district, and our school is half the size of Beverly Middle School, and we have three assistant principals. So I don't quite understand how the math works out here. But I would also like to add that I am a parent of one of the 22.8% children in this district who have special needs, students with disabilities. And I could try to explain what it feels like to have a child who has significant learning needs and needs a high level of support, but the reality is, if you don't experience it, if you don't know it, you will never understand it. I could try to explain what the teachers, paraprofessionals, and special educators at Hannah Elementary School have done for my child, and the impact that they have made on her life, but if you haven't experienced it, you will never truly understand it. And when I hear that we are looking to cut a special education position at Hannah Elementary, I'm shocked, I'm dismayed, and I'm disgusted. Because, again, we are looking to take away services from the most vulnerable people. And we can all sit here and we can say, "Well, we're not going to fill positions from people who are retiring," right? This is attrition, right? We're not cutting jobs. But the reality is, enrollment is growing, and you are not filling positions as they become open. So what does that really mean? Let's do the math. It means that class sizes are going to get bigger. It means that caseloads will become larger. And it means kids like my daughter, who need these services to be able to come to school and get her free and appropriate public education, that is going to become much harder. And the reality is, too, I work in education. I've sat on the other side of the table of enough IEP meetings to know how things really work. When you have to ration care and ration services, families like mine, who know how to speak the lingo, and know what to ask for, and know the buttons to push, my child is going to get what she needs. But I worry about the parents of children who don't know what I know, who don't know how to come in and speak that language. Once again, the families who are going to be hurt are the most vulnerable. I have heard enough tonight that I have very, very serious concerns about the functioning of our special education department here in the Beverly Public Schools. I would ask at this point that the Department of Education should probably look into some of the allegations that I've heard here tonight. So we have an opportunity to get it right. I have lived in this city for over 10 years, which I guess makes me a newcomer, because a lot of people have been here longer. But in the 10 years that I've been here, I have watched this city grow. I have seen developments left and right. Obviously, we prioritize certain things, and development can be great, right? It can help the economy, it can bring more money in. But what are we spending that money on? Where are our priorities? This city can grow, and we can develop, and we can pump money into those things, but let's support our schools. Thank you.
We're going to hear from Casey Fiore next, on deck Nick Kravka and Chandler Davis.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We did this last year, and obviously, decisions were made, and consequences come about, and I kind of want to look at that. I want to take this opportunity to reflect on the consequences of last year's cuts, just to clarify the stakes and the meaning of what is being discussed here tonight. One casualty of last year's budget cuts was the position of outreach counselor at BMS, which was occupied by Teresa Guillaume. At this very hearing last year, Teresa spoke eloquently about the lack of mental health support for our young people, and the long-term consequences of not having enough counselors and mental health professionals to serve our students' needs. I would like to speak tonight on the consequences of BMS no longer having Teresa. In her two years at BMS, Teresa worked tirelessly in collaboration with educators, administrators, and families to reduce chronic absence and truancy and mitigate the resulting negative effects among BMS students. She was wildly successful. Chronic absence and truancy was reduced by more than 5% over the course of Teresa's only two years here. That is a difference of 80 students consistently attending school and engaged in learning and growing with their peers. Even excluding absences on makeup days, our attendance data this year shows that positive trend appears to be substantially reversed. This will not come as a surprise to anyone who works in this building. We feel the difference every day. We are the ones who need to double our efforts and take on new responsibilities to attempts to get these kids coming back to school every day. Primary responsibility for attendance at BMS this year was given to grade-level assistant principals, who already had way too much on their plates. They can't work much harder than they already were, and they can't make more time in the day. So how were they supposed to make this work? And that goes for all of us. We all take on extra responsibility to deal with the effects of these students' increasing absences. You are spreading us all too thin by asking us to take on this huge responsibility, which was effectively dealt with by one extremely energetic woman last year. These budget cuts often seem to be made with a casual acceptance that we'll come up with some other way to take care of everything that we do now. But I assure you, that is not what happens. We didn't find an elegant solution to replace Teresa Guillaume. Things just got worse. That is what happens when essential services are simply cut, and the members of this committee and the people of Beverly need to understand, the result of the cuts we have seen year after year is that things have just gotten worse. The undoing of Teresa's hard work was not only entirely predictable, it was inevitable. And in fact, multiple educators stated that it would happen at this very budget hearing last year, which is the bigger point that I kind of want to raise. When we make these cuts, is anything ever actually done to examine the results? What accounting is done to determine whether or not these cuts were successful? At least 25 to 50 additional BMS students will be at risk of increased exposure to mental health issues, delinquency, and substance abuse without the intervention of our former outreach counselor this year. Are their struggles worth the $84,000 we saved by cutting Teresa from the payroll? I don't think so. We need leaders to be honest and direct with the community and tell them what is happening in our schools. We need more counselors, paraprofessionals, teachers, and administrators, not fewer. Please reject this budget and tell the community that our schools need and deserve more and better. Thank you.
What are you all doing here? Oh, my God. Hi. Nick Kravka. I live in the band room. Unless it's concert week, then I live in the auditorium. I've come here tonight to ask the committee to do three things. My first request is the exact same request I've made of this body a year ago. I would appreciate if you would vote on the current budget, go back to the starting point, and come up with one that actually supports the students and the schools of this city. In watching these school committee meetings, especially around budget time, I have noticed how what is discussed in these meetings, to me, just kind of feels divorced from the reality that we see every day. I've heard phrases like, "We don't want to be over-serving students," which frankly, I've never seen that. In almost 15 years of public education, I've seen students adequately served, I've seen students underserved. I've never seen an overserved student. I actually struggle to imagine what that looks like. Are they, are they being fed too well? Do they get too much individualized attention? Are they too successful? Is there too much equity in the curriculum? What do we even mean when we say we are over-serving a student? I also see in these discussions about the budget that there was one phrase that's continually brought up, school after school after school, and that phrase was, "These cuts will have no impact on student outcomes." These conversations that I've witnessed lead me to believe that this committee kind of has a fundamental misunderstanding of what is happening in our schools every single day. Instead of me telling you, or trying to tell you everything in three minutes, I want to jump to my second request. This is the exact same request that the teaching staff had before, during, and now after the teacher's strike. I would like it if you would talk to us, not listen to us once a year at a budget meeting, but like, actually talk to us. Leave the law firm at home, or fire them, whichever fits your fancy. And just kind of have a conversation. We've had difficult conversations every day, where we've had to overcome a lot of differences of opinion every day. We are very willing and very open to having those conversations. You can talk to my boss, I'm in her office a lot, we have these conversations every day, and yet, we are still here, working together for the betterment of the schools. Talk to us. Have a conversation with us, okay? Get an honest look at what the schools are going through, and then that should be the guiding force for the decisions that you make. Instead, what I see is a committee that takes the reports it's given and doesn't dig into them. I can promise you, there's no such thing as a cut to a school that doesn't impact student outcomes. Every cut negatively impacts the kids. Whether it's having less parents to support IEPs, less special educators to offer differentiation, less assistant principals to help dysregulated students and reach out to families, less counselors to offer mental health services, these cuts impact all of us. If I, as a classroom teacher, do not have these supports, I have to take time out of the things that are supposed to be my job as well, refining understanding, working on curriculum, actually trying to get the knowledge to the kids to then try to take on those support structures. And I don't do them nearly as well as the people who do them today. It's so important to have these support structures in our classrooms. You've got to be willing to talk to us, okay? For my third request, I would like this committee to really take the time and interrogate the information that you're receiving about the budgets. Instead of accepting it and, on blind faith, hoping for the best, interrogate the information. I know when I was watching the budget presentation, the number-one question that I had was, "We just had the longest strike in Massachusetts teachers' history, partly because our staff is telling us we're chronically understaffed. How can we propose a budget that cuts more positions and pretends it has no impact?" Because I wanted to model some of this behavior, I actually have 65 other questions that the staff gave to me that I could ask tonight, but I've heard the timer go off, and I'm trying not to be rude. There are a lot of questions that we could have asked, and thinking about some of these is not intuitive to me. I had to ask my peers, because it's impossible for one person to think of all of these things. If we're going to move forward as a unit, you've got to be willing to talk to us, and you've got, and you've got to be willing to listen. We're here, as we always have been, ready to work to make this school system the best it can be. It would be nice if it felt like we had a willing partner for that in this school committee and not an adversary. Thank you.
My name is Chandler Davis, and I'm a 6th grade teacher here at BMS. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Oh, 6th grade, yeah, Beverly. There is a proposed plan of a three-person team for grades 5 and 6. As a teacher who has seen the positive impact of current two-person model on the Team Tigers and all the other teams, I urge you to strongly reconsider this decision, especially in light of our district's ongoing commitment of fostering strong school communities and maintaining high academic standards. One of our core goals of a school improvement plan is to build and sustain a strong sense of community. This is not just an abstract goal. It's something we strive for daily in our classrooms and across our grade levels. The current two-person team model supports this by creating a cohesive, collaborative environment where students and teachers form meaningful relationships and a sense of belonging. Moving to a three-person team structure would undermine this. The proposed change would separate teams from the rest of their grade, creating isolated pods rather than a unified community. The new model comes with a completely different schedule, shorter class times, and more frequent transitions. These added transitions are not only disruptive to learning, but they also diminish the valuable instructional time. These grades are a pivotal developmental period. The two-person team model has long been proven effective here. It offers consistency, stronger teacher-student relationships, improved attendance, and a shared instructional vision across grade level. It is a structure that both students and educators have benefited from for years. So why break a model that is clearly working? I urge the committee to look at the data and student outcomes for our two-person teams. These results speak for themselves. Academic performance has remained strong, and student engagement has thrived under this model. Altering this successful structure to address budgetary constraints compromises what is best for our kids, which is our most important priority. I understand that difficult decisions must be made in times of financial challenge, but these decisions should not come at the cost of what we know supports student learning and emotional well-being. So we must ask So we must ask, is saving money worth losing the community, stability, and proven success we've built? Please reconsider this proposed change and keep what's working for our students. I love Beverly, I grew up here, this is my home, so I'm dedicated and hopeful for the future. Thank you.
Okay, it seems that both of the emails I received have been read into the record. Thank you Chandler and Sarah for reading those into the record. At this point, I'm looking around the room to see if there are any more speakers that would like to join our public hearing. We do have a regular school committee meeting that I do need to call to order. I see a hand. If you could come to the microphone, provide your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Heidi Bissel, Ashton Street in Beverly. I had no intentions of talking tonight, but listening to these teachers, my heart breaks for them because they are working so hard to make the children and this place a better place for the children to be. My heart breaks for them. They are pleading with you to not cut. In fact, I can almost be positive that there's more money to be had, there's more money to be found, and I think that it should be really looked into. I know firsthand, I'm a retired para, I worked at the Beverly schools for 25 years, all my kids went through here, I love the Beverly school system. But if you're not a teacher, or you haven't been in the trenches in the last 10 years, you have no idea what these people go through. Like I said, my heart breaks for them, and I just hope that to make Beverly better, you really listen to them, like that last gentleman said. Have the conversations with them. Don't just assume that this is best, and numbers are numbers, because our children are not numbers. They're feeling people. Thank you.
I'm looking around the room to see if there's any more interested participants in our public hearing this evening. I see another hand. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Matt Sedeka, Russell Street. I'm a parent of an amazing child who's currently at McEwen High School. And he has been succeeding so much, thanks to all of the amazing teachers and paraprofessionals, to the point where I know Beverly has a great school system, thanks to its teachers and staff. I'm proudly recommending anyone that I know to send their kids to McEwen, based certainly on the staff and the paras that are there. And hearing their stories and looking at this budget, this is absolutely insulting to all of the children that are currently in the Beverly school system. It feels absolutely retaliatory. After all the hard work that the teachers have fought for to help improve everything that they need. And I just want to say to all the teachers that all the parents, everyone that I've spoken to, the community completely has your back and absolutely stand with you in solidarity for everything that's going on. The entire electorate that I speak to knows that this is an absolute terrible budget. To the community, I absolutely implore you to please do whatever you can to just strike down this budget. And to the teachers, I absolutely say to keep the fight going forward. All the parents stand behind you, all the children stand behind you, do whatever needs to be done to move this forward. Yeah, thank you.
Megan Walsh.
Megan Walsh, Blake Street, also here, BMS. How about our Beverly educators? I am so proud to work alongside of you. There are no words that I can add tonight that can compare to what we've heard. The only words I can leave us all with tonight is, what are you going to do? What are your decisions from here? And what are your actions in response to this outpouring tonight? Thank you.
Okay, that seems to be a wrap. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Your second. Mayor Cahill, your second. All those in favor of adjourning at 7:51? We have five. The public hearing of the Beverly Public Schools for FY '26 budget is now adjourned. We will take a three-minute recess before we begin the regular school committee meeting that was scheduled for 7:30. BevCam, you ready?
I am ready. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. This is the 7:30, a little bit of a late start for our regular school committee meeting. I want to thank everyone that has joined us tonight. It is May 14, 2025. We are at the Beverly Middle School, and we're always thankful that our friends at BevCam are broadcasting us, streaming us, and making recordings available. Tonight, we are joined in person by our school committee, members of the district leadership team, and we have a number of members of the public with us as well. Quickly, call the roll. Mayor Cahill.
Here.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza.
Here.
Karen Robinson.
Here.
Lauren De Visnick.
Here.
And I'm Rachel Abel. We may expect Dr. Silva a little bit later, once his other commitment wraps up. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I could ask Ms. Visnick to lead us this time.
I'm on mute right now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Our next order of business is a report from our student representative. I believe she's otherwise engaged this evening, but has left me a detailed report. I will try to do it justice. So Delia Gauker has reported out that the National Honor Society in April and the National Art Honor Society hosted their induction ceremonies at Beverly High. They are also working with the Red Cross to coordinate a blood drive that happened on April 16th. On April 11th, the Dallas Brass came to do a presentation and clinic with the middle school and high school concert band members, and then performed a joint concert that night. The spring season was underway. Juniors had an opportunity to take the SATs at the high school, and DECA students who had qualified were competing in Florida during the break. College visits in the guidance office were continuing throughout April, and course selection had concluded with guidance counselors who are starting to work on student schedules for the next year. For May, seniors are working on their reach internship projects, sorry, reach internship or on projects right now, and students in the AP classes and music class will come back to school for those classes during the day. AP exams are starting this week. Most of the students take these exams in the upper gym, so they'll have a different schedule during the exam time. Junior prom will be taking place this Friday at the Doubletree in Danvers, and senior prom will be taking place on May 29th at Cruzport in Gloucester. On Tuesday, May 22nd, juniors have the opportunity to attend the Credit for Life field trip that will be taking place at Salem State. They will learn about financial planning and how to plan for life after high school. The music department is holding its annual spring concert on Tuesday, May 20th, so next week. It includes the band, choral, and string programs. That is at 6:30 at the auditorium. Spring seasons are wrapping up for athletics. Many of the teams have had senior games and honored their graduating seniors. Teams that will be entering the playoffs will do so soon. And following the season, many teams are holding banquets at the high school or at local venues to celebrate and select the captains for next year. I thank Delia for providing us the detailed report for the prior two months, and we look forward to seeing her at the June meeting. Next on our agenda is the approval of meeting records from April 9th. It's our regular school committee meeting. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill and Ms. Visnick. Were there any edits or corrections that are noteworthy? I'm not seeing all those in favor of approving the meeting records. Five to zero. Next on our agenda is an opportunity for Resident Voice for input on agenda-related items. When I last looked at the signup sheet, I did not see anyone who was prepared to speak, looking around the room, making a last call. As a reminder, we provide this opportunity at our regular school committee meetings for members of our community. To provide input to the school committee, we ask that you limit your remarks to approximately three minutes. You also have the option to request a link via residentvoice@beverlyschools.org before 7:00 PM on the scheduled night of the meeting, or to submit in writing something approximately three minutes in length for the chair to read into the record. Again, these are opportunities to address the body and is not a discussion. Next item on the agenda is our items by consensus motion.
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Well, that was, you were seconding.
No, Mayor, you're second. I wrote down Lurinda as our first, and the motion is to move to approve items by consensus as outlined on our agenda, items A, B, C, and D. These are warrants, AKA the bills of the district, and the various amounts for each of the warrant numbers is listed. As a group, all those in favor of approving the warrants and paying our bills. That's a five-zero. Thank you. Next, for the superintendent report, Dr. Trocheck. I believe you have some information that you've left on our table to present.
Yes. I only have one item this evening, and it is just to share with you the approved budgets and tuition rates for the New England Consortium. As you know, the superintendents of all of the surrounding districts sit on the board, and each year we present to you the budget and the tuition rates. So unless there are questions, I'm happy to answer them. You can reach out to myself or to Bethany with any specific questions that you might have as you go along, but just to make sure that you have a copy and understand where that's going. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
I don't see any hands for questions.
All right.
Okay. Sure. And for the school committee chair updates, I did want to report out while we were being broadcast on BevCam that last week during the joint council meeting, we had a special committee of the whole just prior to the joint council where we signed a three-year contract with Dr. Peter J. Cushing to be the next superintendent of Beverly Public Schools. His official start date is July 1st, 2025, and he was there, immediately threw on a Beverly hoodie, and began to listen intently to the discussion that we had that evening. Dr. Trocheck presented our district improvement plan, our different goals, and Brian Ailes presented sort of an overview of the budget situation for the district, a landscape, I think is what he called it, and gave counselors and school committee members an opportunity to ask questions. That was recorded by our friends at BevCam. It's available on YouTube if you'd like to watch that. And we have some policies this evening for a second reading and vote. We talked about these last time. These are policy B E D A, notification of school committee meetings, B E D B, agenda format, and B E D D, which is the school committee rules of order. And I didn't know if there was someone that wanted to make the motion as outlined recommending the approval.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick and Dr. McKenzie de Franza. Were there any comments, questions? I think these are largely unchanged, so all those in favor. Five-zero. Eight-twelve. And next on our agenda is the FY26 budget discussion and/or scheduling for a vote. We had intended to bring our calendars with us this evening so that we could reasonably plan a future date in which we could take a vote on the budget, and I don't know if we want to start with that or if we wanted to start with any of the discussion. Ms. Visnick?
I want to pick a day. My calendar is open. I don't think it can be tonight, and how much discussion we have tonight, based on the fact that we got started late, is a whole nother topic, right? Maybe all of our discussion happens at another meeting. Maybe some of our discussion happens tonight if we have specific action items that we want to throw across the table towards the administration. But we need a date for a vote, and it's not tonight, in my opinion.
Mayor Cahill and then Dr. McKenzie de Franza.
I would recommend a date. Having spent a couple of minutes trying to look at calendars over the next week, I think the next Thursday evening might be a possibility. It would be eight days from now, is that right? Yep.
So that would be the 22nd. As Delia's report outlined, there's a number of events happening at high school. So 22nd? We can put a pin in that. Dr. McKenzie, did you have a different thought?
I don't know that I had a different thought. I do think we need a different evening. I'm a little concerned about how much time it will take for us to circle back to Central Office and Dr. Trocheck for some of these questions. Perhaps a week is enough time, but I do think we'll need more time to just assess more of what we've heard and be able to have those conversations with regard to, you know, just looking up different pieces of information, and also to just be able to give her enough time to, to, you know, assess data, bring data, that sort of thing. So I think we will need another time in maybe a week. I don't know. It would be helpful to have her input too, on timing.
Okay. So, Dr. Trocheck, a request for input on your time. Ms. Visnick had her hand up, and then Ms. Robinson.
Can we, can somebody, I have one more paper due. I am holding on for dear life. Can somebody remind me where are our deadlines? Because I think that that will help us pick a new date.
I was just checking with that. With Emma, we have, we have to have a final vote and submission to the mayor by May 30th. That would be 21 days before the mayor, before the city council is scheduled to vote. Is that right?
Well, I'm presenting, I'm presenting the proposed budget to the council Monday, June 2nd. It's got to go to the printer the week before.
So then it's going to have to be before then.
So the 30th is too late.
I mean, the legal charter would require us to have it by the 30th, I think. Is that what you said, Emma? But we, I understand that needs to get.
Well, and to go any later with presentation of it to the council really truncates their ability to do their, their job as well during the month of June.
Okay. Ms. Robinson.
I just wanted to make sure we still be able to have a discussion this evening regarding the budget.
Yes, I think we need to set a date before too much time gets away from us.
Mrs. Visnick, you just made a comment about needing to get a paper done and looking to go later than the 22nd meeting.
No, I didn't know, meaning that in my brain, there's not a lot other than my own academics. You know, the 22nd wouldn't be my choice for other reasons. I will have family in town, but if that's what our body wants to do, that's what we'll do. I do think it's important that we have our discussion on camera, in person, as opposed to sending our request to Dr. Trocheck. And again, I'm just trying to be mindful of, we don't have our whole body here this evening. I think that's important, right? So there's, can we start the discussion tonight? Absolutely, sure. But I think we need time to have a discussion, and hopefully all seven of us will be at the table to have that discussion. So, and I think that that discussion, if, as a body, we're going to say, can we look at something else, then we need to really be thinking that we need to put two meetings on the calendar, because it's unrealistic for us to sit here and go, can you, can you, I'm not even looking at you, can you rework the numbers to do X, Y, and Z? She can't do that in this room on the fly, right? So if collectively we say, we think X, Y, Z is important, please figure out how to move things around and bring us some new proposal. We're going to do that in person on some date, and then there needs to be time for then us to meet again and vote. So that's what my concern was, and I didn't know the dates in my head, because no other dates are in my head other than my last paper on Tuesday.
Dr. McKenzie de Franza.
Okay, so, I mean, if I'm going to summarize what it sounds like we're saying, Ms. Robinson asked if we're going to have a discussion tonight. We'll start tonight, and Ms. Visnick is confirming that we will probably need more than one day, because Dr. Trocheck may need to respond and get information. So my earlier point was, there will be some kind of lag time that we need. It sounds like if we meet on the 22nd, it gives us a little cushion in case we think that's not enough time. But it sounds like we should then meet sooner rather than towards the end of the month, just in case what you're saying happens, which is that somehow we need more time. So.
So we have a committee of the whole scheduled for the 28th, but it sounds like that might be too pushing it to.
Sounds like that's too late.
You know, I'm sorry.
Mayor Cahill.
Thank you. I'll say a couple of things. One, I appreciated the testimony and the input tonight. One thing I did not hear from anybody was an acknowledgement that the new money on the table is, for the second year in a row, incredibly historic, and there's no more money beyond what is being proposed in the FY26 budget. And so what I did not hear as well was any suggestion of, this is really important to me, so I would recommend you take from here and do this instead. That's what we're going to be faced with if, in fact, we're going to try to do anything different than is proposed. So I don't know about two more meetings. It would be probably nice to just digest a little bit. And, you know, one of my thoughts was to, we all digest and then ask Dr. Trocheck, you know, to just kind of share some thoughts with us based upon all of us digesting what has been brought forward tonight. That's my thinking, and, you know, it does make sense that it be sooner than later. Question is finding a night. Maybe it's, maybe it's got to be a very early meeting or a very late meeting that happens on a night when something else of importance has got our attention as well.
Ms. Visnick.
So, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, and that's exactly my point, that if we want to say what else is possible, and I wish to acknowledge, let me be the person in the room that says, and actually, I did hear Dr. Trocheck say that, two, second year in a row of an incredible influx of money into the schools. So what else could we do with that money? How else could we spend it? Where are our trade-offs? And so I think in this room, we are very proud of our elementary class sizes, but we heard a lot this evening about other class sizes and other positions, and all I can think about, and I'm not a school administrator for a living, however, all, what I thought about was, could we shift the money so that our elementary class sizes got a little bigger, because they are at like record-low levels, and then restore some of the other positions? And I think that that's going to take a lot of work on behalf of the people who are seated on quote-unquote "your" side of the table. I don't know what other options are available, and I don't know, from an educational expertise point of view, if our administrators would even quote-unquote "believe" in that suggestion, regardless of what we ask, right? I'm not an early education expert, and so what is the trade-off? Is it even possible? Because we have five elementary schools. That makes the, if we had one central elementary school, it'd be a lot easier to level out all the class sizes, right? But we don't. So given that we don't, is it even possible to say, okay, I want to, you know, save, I don't know, let's just say one position per elementary school. How do we do that? Where do we do it? And is that the right thing to do, educationally speaking? Because we know early interventions pay back tremendously. So would we want to quote-unquote, you know, take those positions, put the short, you know, do a shorting in the elementaries, right? And I would want my educational experts to talk to us about that.
If I could direct the committee back to selecting a date, does it sound like the 22nd is available, and would 7:00 PM be a good day for that meeting? 7:00 PM, Thursday? I don't know if we need a motion for scheduling. So we will have a continued discussion, 7:00 PM on Thursday, the 22nd, and hope that our colleagues will be able to also make that date. We have additional items on our agenda this evening that shouldn't take too long. Do we want to put a pin in the discussion aspect to take care of those and then come back to discussion, or do we want to, I think, Ms. Visnick, you started us down a path of discussion about the budget.
I did, but I would love if we could get through our business and then come back to it. Could we do that?
Yes. Why don't we plan?
Super speed.
To do that. We're going to move down the agenda item to take care of the subcommittee items that should not take very long, and then we will return to discussion. But we will plan for more discussion and decision on the 22nd. Okay. The Standing Committee on Finance and Facility, if you wouldn't mind, Ms. Visnick, giving us your report and introducing the policies.
Sure. We, on super speed, we met a week ago, and we had the new Bob Shiroli, Mr. Coffee, and we did a big overview of B&amp;G. We did our normal counting of the beans, as I like to call it. I hope Mr. Melanson's watching at home, if he went home. And then we had our athletic director, and we did an overview of the athletics department, including how many students do we have at each level? Okay, so that's our summary. And the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities did bring forward for a first reading four policies this evening that were in your packet. One on school bus safety, one on bus driver examination and training, one on drug and alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicle drivers, and one on student conduct on buses. Those are for the first reading, and then this committee will vote on them, hopefully on the next reading. We have gifts to schools, March 2025. So we're always a little delayed. The money comes in and, all right, we're a little delayed. So it's from March. The Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends approval attached, March 2025, gifts to schools totaling $1,201.07.
Second.
With gratitude.
With gratitude. I always forget that. I'm sorry, Ms. Abel. Thank you for reminding me.
So that's Ms. Visnick's motion, Mayor Cahill has seconded, totaling $1,201.97. All those in favor?
Okay. The Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the approved budget transfer, transfer number 1743. Again, that is my motion.
Second.
You guys are too fast. Okay. Is there any discussion on the transfers? All those in favor?
Okay. And the last thing, and I said we're trying to go fast. It was my idea to flip the meeting upside down. Certainly, we might want to have some conversation in this part. One of the things the athletic director asked us when he came to our meeting was if he could begin to sell advertising. We had a pretty lively discussion about it. This is not sponsorship. It's not putting somebody's name on a scoreboard, but rather putting up, almost like at Harry Ball Field. I think, you know, a lot of people go to Harry Ball, and you see there are banners hanging all along the fence. And so our committee did discuss it pretty much at length. You can watch that meeting if you want to have some, some cures for insomnia. And, and we decided, and we voted out unanimously to recommend to this body, the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends approval of the athletic department to solicit and collect revenues from the advertising of commercial products and services on surfaces surrounding or adjacent to athletic fields and courts. And those funds would be deposited into the athletic revolving fund for the same use and purpose.
Second for discussion, and I got a question or two.
I got an answer or two.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Mayor Cahill?
Thank you, Madam President. So a couple of things that I hear, that I hope that there's already been some thought towards, and I think I'll be looking for some, a policy, how to determine when an offer to make a donation to advertise should not be accepted? What would be inappropriate advertisers? And also, you know, what would be the amounts for various purposes, and how long would the advertising be good for, et cetera? So I, I think there, there needs to be, there need to be parameters around that that we can look at together and understand how it's going to work.
So we do have a policy already about advertising. I think that relatively speaking, I feel strongly that it is not my intent to, for lack of a better word, micromanage Mr. Wood, and that if he thinks, he understands that he is running athletics for our middle school and high school age students, and he would understand what was appropriate and not appropriate. And to some extent, same thing with money. What is the going rate? I think that will be part of his whole project. And to, to say, yeah, that, that, I wish to stop there.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure I agree. Let me say differently. I'd like to see what he puts in place. Maybe just have it presented.
My bean counter back there, do I see you saying something?
Yeah. I, I was not part of the FNF meeting, but I was sitting here and listening, and I believe we found a policy that you had referenced, the role of the superintendent and parameters.
Like for a final, right? The superintendent got like the final okay. I don't remember the policy number. Is it in my meeting minutes? Hold on a minute.
Okay.
So I think Karen wants to speak, but I'll just say that maybe we just push this to the next meeting. We have a little more conversation. If there's any more questions, I get the data, then we vote on another day.
Okay. Ms. Robinson?
I was just going to say, I think it would, there are banners at Hurd Stadium. I think that that would be a good place to start as a former chair mom who sold the advertisements. They have a pretty good system going, and it would be worthwhile to speak to whoever, whoever's in charge of fundraising this year because they've done a really good job with, with that. So it would make sense to make it consistent.
And what I'll say, I think that anything that like that, that has been sold previously has been sold by booster groups. And so the booster groups are helping their own specific team. Mr. Wood's proposal is that the athletic department offer, for instance, the backstop of the baseball field right now, and then that money would come into the athletic revolving account, not a booster account to, and so there is no guarantee that a sale for, you know, this banner on the back of some particular field, that all of that money would go to that particular sport. Rather, it goes into the athletic revolving for the needs of the athletic department. And part of what was presented to us is how little of our athletic budget is actually covered by our fees. And so the maintenance of the fields in particular becomes a really important thing that we're trying to, to bring in some extra income to bridge a gap, as opposed to raising fees.
Okay. So shall I put this on the committee of the whole for the 28th?
I would love that.
And if members of this committee have questions, to direct them through Dr. Cherochik?
Sure.
Okay.
By the way, it's policy KHB, if you were looking for it.
KHB.
Okay. Let me see. That is the end of our report, and we are supposed to have one more meeting. And our last meeting, we are hoping, we'll see if it happens, we're hoping to have a presentation on the green energy and either the monetary savings. Yeah, basically, that's how I'm going to summarize it. What we get as a school district out of having all the different solar panels, the solar canopies, because it's not a straight one for one, I've mentioned this many times, the city has a pool of money that all the green energy goes into, and then we pull back out of it. And I was remiss, I should have said that in Mr. Coffey's B&amp;G report, the light changing, he changed out all the lights with city credits, with energy credits that we have. And so all of our schools now are using energy efficient lighting. And again, we should start to see that particular payback on investment immediately.
Thanks. I'm just noticing I wrote down that we did have a motion, so you've taken it off the table, too, right? Your main motion?
I withdraw my motion, sure.
Those minutes won't be out of order? Okay. If we could now have Dr. Kenan Mackenzie give us a report out from curriculum instruction and student life?
Okay. Well, we were going to meet this evening, and we did not, so we don't have an update from a recent meeting. However, we do have policies that I'd like to propose for adoption after a second reading. The first one is on academic freedom, and that would be in your packet that you received earlier. And so this would be our second reading, correct? We had it in our last meeting. Are there?
If you're making the motion, I'll second it.
I just want to confirm that we did, I know it's been a couple of meetings ago. So I'd like to make a motion to approve our policy IB, academic freedom.
Okay. So we have a motion, Mayor Cahill has seconded, and this is to mark as reviewed for this evening?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor? Five zero?
Okay. We have a second. I'm sorry, I'm trying to, I have too many documents open now. Okay. We have our second policy for the same packet. Okay. This policy number, sorry, so feedback, is IGB, Student Support Services Programs. I'd like to recommend approval of the attached policy after the second reading that we've had.
Can I ask a question before a second?
A question about the other one, or?
This one.
The agenda calls it Support Services Programs. The document says Student Services Programs. Which is it titled?
Oh, okay. Student.
Student Services Programs.
Yeah. So it's, that's the difference between the MASC sample and Beverly Zone.
Okay. Thanks. So the motion is the Student Services Programs?
To approve it as presented here, yeah.
I'll second that. Thanks.
Are there other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you for highlighting the differences. All those in favor?
Okay. We will have our next meeting on June 11th at 6:15. Thank you.
Okay. Just to round out, negotiating, subcommittee had met to discuss the superintendent contract. I can't remember the exact dates of that. We actually met twice. And we don't have another scheduled meeting for negotiations at this time. And policy?
Policy remains in hiding. Quite literally waiting for the ripple down effect of what's happening at, at our federal level. And so far, knock wood, we're, we're just hiding, hoping none comes.
Thank you. The next agenda item that we'll entertain before circling back to discussion on the FY26 budget is communications from school committee members. Is there anyone that wishes to bring something to the table based on a communication that they received since our last meeting? Not seeing any hands. So we'll return now to the School Committee Chair Updates, item C, the FY26 budget. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Okay. So I just want to start by acknowledging the effort that's gone into this budget and the challenges we face. But I cannot in good conscience support this version of the FY26 budget as it stands now. Our job as a school committee is to set policy and approve budgets that reflect the educational values of our community. That means we must ask hard questions when the proposed cuts contradict the values we've set. Goals around equity, student achievement, and academic excellence. This budget proposes to cut dozens of teaching and support positions, including paraprofessionals, special education staff, and educators who by all accounts were success, were successful in the classroom. These decisions are being framed in vague terms, not a good fit, which avoids an honest accounting of the financial pressures driving these choices. That's a policy problem, not an operations issue. When we obscure the reasons for staffing changes, we erode public trust and violate our own commitment to transparency. And to our new teachers, we're essentially saying, welcome to Beverly, just don't get too used to it here. We're eliminating key positions at a time when student mental health concerns are rising, not failing, not falling. And if we're serious about addressing the mental health crisis in schools, our budget must reflect that priority. Right now, it just doesn't seem to do so. I understand that we're facing a structural funding shortfall, but a budget is not just a spreadsheet. Like many in this room have said tonight, it's a moral document. This one asks our most vulnerable students and most essential staff to bear the cost of underinvestment and poor long-term planning. That's not acceptable. We should not normalize this level of disinvestment as a new status quo. We promised the public we were fighting for better schools when we ultimately signed our educator contracts. The public believed us. Now we have to match that belief with a budget that reflects the values that we claim to stand for. So I'm asking that this committee really think about this, what, what we have in front of us. Let's go back to the drawing board, center this conversation, not on what we're allowed to do with the money we've been given, but what on our students actually need. And then we have to have the courage to advocate for that. Thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
Thanks. Ms. Robinson, could I just ask you, you, you used the word underinvestment. You also used the word disinvestment. Where are you, what, what's underlying the use of those words?
That we're not investing in the priorities that, that I think our school, our schools need. The, what do you, what, what are you specifically asking me?
Well, you said underinvestment. Do you mean in dollars?
I, I think our priorities are in the wrong. Our priorities need to be, have, we need to take another look at our priorities.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. So the, the conversation we started about looking back at what's proposed here, should we be relooking at some things? And I think I heard-
Yes.
-Mrs. Visnick say earlier, we really have to go back to our leadership. And that's what I was saying before, kind of all of us just digesting, including Dr. Cherochik and her whole team, just digesting what was presented, what was asked, and that kind of asking them to come back to us and talk some about where the proposal, where the proposed budget spends, and whether there's a way, whether there's some sense of agreement collectively from our educational leadership to revisit some of those decisions? That's
Yes. I think we need to, I think, I think we need to talk to more people. I think it does, I think we need to bring our educators into these conversations and find out where the needs, where the needs are in the classroom of today. And I think that we need to make sure that we are meeting the needs of the students who are in front of teachers today.
Dr. Mackenzie DeFranza?
Thank you. So I've really appreciated hearing from all of our educators tonight. I also appreciate the work that has happened at Central Office, trying to make sense of an economic landscape. And I also feel like I heard a lot of things that would suggest we don't have a shared understanding of how the decision-making came about for some of these decisions. So one of the things I think would be helpful, and I've certainly said maybe one off, is that clarifying how the school committee works, I think, would be helpful. So our statutory role is in establishing policy, hiring and evaluating the superintendent. There are real concerns about how much and in what ways we can engage directly with teachers and schools and not overstep our role. So what we have to do is entrust our system to be able to elevate issues before their crises. And what I am feeling is that our system does not adequately do that. Now, if we were to enter the building and have any sort of evaluative engagement, we would be breaking our ethics as school committee members. After our last negotiations, we tried to make efforts to create a framework that includes teacher voice as a regular part of it. So, so my committee, for example, SISL, we have a teacher that participates in SISL. There are some structural things that we're going to have to do for voice to be meaningful. So when there are agendas, for example, established, there are things we have to do statutorily, but I don't know that we're good at explaining why and how we're creating the agendas we do for our meetings. What has to be covered? And so by leaving much of this to clarification in the moment, I think there's a lot of unfortunate misunderstanding and mistrust that can happen that we have to work on as a committee in helping people to better understand what we are allowed to do and what we're not allowed to do. I will never make an excuse, though, for not knowing more. And so if there is clearly a divide in what we understand has happened and how decisions are made, it is, I think, incumbent on us to figure out why there's such a gap in what feels like is being shared and how this decision-making process has worked. So I'm hoping that that's going to be the next step in the coming days. I like to assume the best of intentions, and I also like to, to know that people feel empowered to share. But I want to make sure that we're all clear and working with the same data and the same information. And right now, it feels like we are not. And that's just my observation. So I would feel much better if I can understand where there's a lack of alignment, and I think we'll need some- think we'll need some time to do that. And I understand that it took lots of time for people to put this together and for people to come out and express their concern. So I believe that it's all valid and that people mean well. And I have to say that for my colleagues, we're also working really hard and mean well. But there's clearly a lack of some kind of alignment that is keeping us stuck. And I think we need to better understand that so we can make wiser decisions about our budget.
Thank you. Mayor Cahill and then Ms. Visnick.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Dr. Mackenzie DeFranza. I guess I want to kind of reiterate, one, and to anybody watching who doesn't see, some of our educators have stayed, and so we're kind of looking at you and talking with you a little bit as we're going through this. So I do want to say again, really appreciate that you're here, really appreciate what we've heard this evening. Dr. Trochik and your leadership team from Central Office and from each of our schools, it's you who we look to, that's, you know, based on everybody's job descriptions, to bring the proposed budget forward. I think the reality of this budget cycle is it's a really strong increase. It still can't do everything, right? Just fact, it can't do everything and be everything. You know, I've said many times with regard to both school and city departments and programs and services, that as a city government, most of what we do is deliver services. We also responsible to try to maintain and improve and replace infrastructure, but most of what we do is services. And services are delivered by our staff, our employees, our teams. And so the main cost in all of our budgets in every department throughout is on that, its salaries, its healthcare, its pensions. So unavoidably, it's that. So I'll just go back to what I said before. It feels that the right thing to do is, given what's been asked for tonight and presented, is to ask Dr. Trochik and her team to digest, just as we are, and with those things in mind, when we need again, come back and walk us through, you know, the decisions that were made leading up to the proposed budget and whether anything, in your viewing of it, you would propose to realign or reprioritize, or not. I think that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'll ask that we hear when we sit next. Is that fair? Does that make sense? Okay, thanks.
Ms. Visnick, then I'm going to call myself.
Dr. Trochik, I wonder if in this moment you could find and put back up for us a slide that you've shown us on multiple times, on multiple occasions, of our collective investment in additional counselors across our district. There is a slide, there's a slide, come on, I know. All right, so while you're looking, I guess, you know, I, it's hard to, if this job were easy, more people would want to do it. And it's hard to sit here and know that we collectively put so much of our own time and energy and emotion into this job. And so I just want to acknowledge that it's difficult then to hear people, in essence, say, "You're not doing a good job. You're not doing your job." And so at the risk of sounding incredibly defensive, when I look at that particular slide that I'm hoping you can find, I have a hard time thinking that we are not investing in social, emotional well-being, that we're not investing in mental health, because we have, in fact, especially since I came onto this board, we have way invested, we have invested tremendously in, specifically in the number of counselors we have, including but not limited to BPS Connects, formerly known as City Connects. And and in collectively trying to train ourselves, as well as our staff, on the importance of belonging and treating each other with respect. And all those things feed into whether children feel good about themselves. And so I, of all the, of all the things we kind of heard this evening, that one was hard for me to, like, resolve what I heard versus what I see. And as the Chair of FNF and as somebody who signs the warrants every week, I think this chart, it's hard to argue with this chart. We either have this many counselors in our district, or this chart is a lie. And I, and I, and I say that, not asserting that you're lying. I apologize if it sounded like that. So so that one particular issue, I just kind of want to set off to the side, and I appreciate the fact that you brought this chart up, but I would maybe push back on this idea that we want to have conversations, that we appreciate that people come here. Okay, please show me where that chart is an error, or show me where that chart is not telling the truth. And then relative to investing, again, it doesn't feel good to have people say, "You are underinvesting or you're not investing." We've heard a lot of people talk about per pupil spending. I personally, I've said multiple times, per pupil spending, there's just a ton of data, there's a ton of research about, per pupil spending does not really drive your test scores, but okay, everybody want to talk about per pupil spending, let's talk about it. Last year's budget, we were spending $20,346 per child. This year, we're spending $21,650. That's 1,300 more. And next year, we're slated to spend $22,750. That's another 1,100 more, per child, times however many children we have in the district. So, again, it's hard to, as a bean counting, my bean counter math, science background, to resolve people saying, "You're not spending enough," when we look at record additional monies being put into this budget, and we look at these, these particular figures. So I, I don't know where to go with that, but, but I will reiterate my statement from earlier. I pay, the superintendent of schools, I pay right out of my own pocket, a decent amount of money. I think she has an incredible staff. I appreciate them, just as I appreciate our teachers. And I love that we're now paying our teachers more money. And I am looking to my administrators, as Dr. Mackenzie DeFranza said, our role is somewhat constrained. And so I'm looking to those people whose job it really is to tell me what is the best way for us to try to run the school district. And so the only thing that I could think of while I was sitting here was, what if we made our elementary class sizes bigger? And I'm sure that has a whole bunch of elementary parents right now, like, jumping off their chairs. But, but, but again, I trust you to do your job, and so I would look forward to hearing if there were some other thoughts.
Thanks. I also wanted to commend Dr. Mackenzie DeFranza on her reflections about our role. One aspect of our role that I take quite seriously is that we're here to represent all of our students. And through conversations before this evening and even at the podium tonight, I heard a lot of individual programs that were named as if they were cuts. Strings is something that had come up, and German. And I appreciate how many opportunities we have provided in our district through athletics and music and performing arts and fine arts and all of these so-called extras. They're not extras, they're part of the whole child, I totally get that. But to the mayor's point, we have trade-offs that we have to be thinking of what is in the best interest of all of our children in preserving the great things that we're doing here in our district and recognizing when enrollments don't necessarily support the continuation of things that we've done in the past. Whether it's because we can't find the right staffing to keep a program going, or the cost to serve is just too much, and it takes away from some of the core curriculum responsibilities that we have and some of the other services that we are required to provide our students. So it is challenging when we are, you know, facing a budget that, for all intents and purposes, pits this against that. So when Ms. Visnick mentioned elementary class size to perhaps provide relief in some of the older, older school, like, in the middle school or the high school, it is something to think about, but then I also think back to all the conversations that we've had about how important it is for our littles to get off on the right footing. We had a letter that was read here this evening from one of our kindergarten educators, and I think that's something that we need to have more conversation about, to figure out what the right balance is in supporting our littles so that they get that strong start. And, and hopefully, you know, are able to take all of the opportunities that we provide and run with them. I had a student participate in strings. I had a student participate in the German program. They're wonderful. And I think having that student voice and choice is wonderful. But I think what we're looking at structurally is making sure that all of our students have a school that is well-staffed, that's well-managed, and provides them a lot of the core curriculum as well. And given the uncertainty with our entitlements, Title I, Title II-A, Title III, with the strain that our Commonwealth is facing, I heard Governor Haley say, "They're basically not backfilling positions," and they are doing a hiring freeze as of the end of this month. I think we need to be realistic, that it's not just Beverly. We have a whole Commonwealth and a whole country that needs to think about all students and how all students can best be served with the resources and the environment that we have at this moment in time. I thank Ms. Visnick for asking for that slide to come up, because I think that's something I've been thinking about a lot, too, is about, something the mayor has frequently said, is that we're really trying to graduate resilient people, right? Resilient people. And resilient people need to find ways to make things work in tough, tough times and have the tough conversations. I think Mr. Kravka's already headed out, but, you know, oh, is he back there? Yeah. I enjoy speaking with you. But I think, I think that, you know, one of, one of the challenges that Dr. Mackenzie DeFranza outlined is, we're not direct dealing. You know, that's a really challenging thing when we're in such a community that values education so greatly. It's, it's really hard, because I think almost half of you have had my kids, and I absolutely hear the wonderful stories coming out of the classrooms, and I appreciate everything that goes into making our resilient people resilient and successful. And I'm just going to leave it there tonight. I saw Ms. Visnick, you have your hand up, and then Ms. Robinson. It's just so complex, and we have to be comfortable with the complexity.
I wondered if, maybe not this evening, maybe this evening, I don't know, if Dr. Trochik, especially because we have all our principals here, or a lot of our principals here, could speak to some of the choices. We heard specifically this evening about getting rid of a school adjustment counselor. Well, let me say that much more positively. We heard someone advocating for keeping a school adjustment counselor that's currently slated to be not backfilled. And you spoke to us about each principal deciding how they wanted to use the resources in their buildings, right? Some are having coaches, some are retaining their coaches, some are choosing BPS Connects, some are choosing counselors instead. And so the idea that you're, you have empowered your, your staff to make the choices that are best for their schools, I think, might be reinforcing to hear again, versus me sitting here and going, "Yeah, why did you get rid of that school adjustment counselor at a, at a particular school?"
So I guess I will just speak to the fact that the budget process begins back in October, and that what we do during that time is that we're looking at enrollments, we're looking at the number of students that are going into certain programs. So, for example, there are shifting cohorts in different places. So sometimes we're looking at positions that we have less students matriculating into a particular program, thus, thus there's a cut within that program. In terms of the piece around this year, we took a specific opportunity to sit with building principals and with, you know, and hear from them about the particular needs of their business, buildings. And there are lots of ways. One of the areas that we have been focusing a lot on have been MTSS and interventions, and how are we providing some of those intervention supports? And the major conversation, I think, started around some of our instructional coaching model that we've had. We've had, pretty much for the last 10 years, I think, two instructional coaches in each building. And the conversation shifted to, what if those coaches' roles shifted, and how would you do it? If you needed to increase your interventions, or you wanted to strengthen the supports that we're giving around Tier Two, and retain what we need around the high-quality professional development, how would you do that? The same goes for the BPS Connects. The program, when we initially partnered, was through Boston College. Boston College had a cookie-cutter model for their City Connects. And it didn't matter whether you already had existing school adjustment councils in your building or not. They had a model, we, we adopted it with fidelity. Some of the shifts and changes that some of the folks are, that we're talking about are, that we had redundancies in some of the tasks and responsibilities that were going on. In different buildings, principals had the opportunity to kind of meet with us. I'm not shifting everything onto the backside. We have the most amazing leadership team in, I would put up against any of them. They have one of the hardest jobs of all. They have to sit in their buildings and, and look specifically, they're the ones in there that are looking at, "What's the student need in my building? What, where are the areas that I want to strengthen? What do, what are our, what is our staff coming together with and saying our goals moving forward are?" And so those conversations were had, the input was definitely there, and decisions were made in conjunction with them around those things. I think one of the things that is really challenging is that, I would say 80% of the folks that spoke, maybe even 90, tonight were talking about the middle school. And I think for, for Lisa and for the staff that's here at the middle school, this building is challenging. I would be the first one to tell you, they're not, they, they face those challenges every day. There's 1,442 kids that walk through the door when they all come. So we're, you know, we know that we have the needed supports. We have, though, increased supports, if you look at our staffing and what we've done. I think it's so hard to be day-to-day in a classroom and, and know what the effects of all of the moving parts are going to be. There are so many different pieces, and every single person was, came to that table tonight, passionately advocating for what they believed they needed to see. But that was, there was, as the mayor pointed out, that was everything, right? There was, there's where we find and where we change. So we have money in there for a librarian. Librarians are a big thing. I was sort of somewhat directed, "I need to keep money in for the library." We have money in there for strings right now, we have to keep strings. No one wants to give, you know, we don't want to lose sort of the identity of what we do, but when you look at a budget, as a building principal and as a superintendent, there has to be decisions that are made. And, and I will go to the mat for the fact that we have gotten so much money from the city in the last two years in terms of increases. They are historic. There is not a school district around us that is talking about a 9% increase to their budget. Even districts that are having two and a half, Proposition Two and a Halfs that are passed in some of the smaller districts. It is a historic and incredible investment in our schools. This city supports our schools, you all support our schools. We just have difficult decisions to make. That's part of, you know, part of the joy of paradise of being a superintendent right now. There are difficult decisions that have to be made. And so there's not one of us that make them lightly. I will, I would like to speak to, I think there were some questions around honesty or transparency. I will tell you that, you know, decisions made by principals about staffing, that is, I will support them in the decisions they make. We have to make hard decisions about staffing every day. And so, you know, I will- And so, you know, I will, I assure you there was no dishonesty or misrepresentation around any of the information that I shared. And I'll be happy to kind of talk with any of you, I would appreciate if you send your questions in advance so we have a little opportunity to get prepared for it when we come to that meeting, but happy to share our background and the data that we use to make some of those decisions because they were all made grounded in data and grounded in the information that we had available to us.
Dr. McKenzie de Franza and then Ms. Robinson.
Well, I think you alluded, Dr. Trurocek, to probably where I was going next, which is, I like to assume the best of intentions until I know otherwise. And it would be helpful to know where is there some misalignment in the shared understanding of what data you're using versus data that's being referenced. I also know that based on our financial forecasting discussions, there are costs that have nothing to do with Beverly specifically that have shifted, whether it's health insurance and premiums and increases we've seen in sanitation, all sorts of things that the city is thinking about. I'm curious about where we've had unanticipated increases and unanticipated reductions that are affecting this budget even from the fall when we started to talk about this. So I think that kind of thing would also be helpful to highlight because we might have been, you know, I know I harped on the library, I admit that, I'm like, that didn't make it happen.
But I mean, well, I tried to preserve the priorities that were given to us. The goal of my job is to meet individually with each one of you, hear what your priorities are, meet with all of the stakeholders that are around and take a look and say, how can I make a budget that represents the things that I'm asked for? Sometimes it's transportation, sometimes it's that.
Right, I just want, maybe this is just to be helpful, I know that there are conversations like in our last joint committee meeting, right, where Mr. Ailes was able to talk about these bigger budgetary shifts and constraints. If we can bring all of that to bear in this conversation, I think it would also help to say, here's what we thought we could do, but here's what's changed, if that applies.
So I appreciate that.
And that might be helpful.
I will say one thing that I think we all tend to forget is that we made a conscious decision to step down from the Essar funding and that we made a decision to rely on some of our revolving accounts so that we didn't have a huge elimination at the end of Essar and didn't have an Essar cliff. We purposefully designed some of our positions to remain for another year funded through revolvings or grants. We all knew that those positions were still going to go away later, those conversations and discussion, we tried very hard to work with both the city in our planning to make sure this was a multi-year budget planning. And so, we knew that we were going to need to take a look at the FY26 budget and how some of those positions that were sitting in revolving, how we were going to reorganize to be able to absorb them. They can't just be added in when the funding isn't there. And so, that was not, so that wasn't as much unanticipated, but I think sometimes we forget that we made that decision in FY25, moving forward, that some of those positions were going to remain in revolving. Again, it was the right decision because it didn't immediately stop halt to some of the things that we were doing, but gave us the opportunity to kind of step down from that. And I think there are always the unanticipated costs of health insurance and of special education tuition increases and those are the majority, I mean, this is the majority of what we're facing. I don't know what they're, unanticipated, I think I always anticipate, a pretty big increase in tuitions in the out-of district. We know that OSD sets those rates and they allow them to happen and we don't have any control. So that's not a decision that we say, oh, we're going to just allocate 1.1 million dollars more in our special education budget because we want to. We do it because the tuitions and the OSD sets that rate and we have to do that. Health insurance went up 1.1, 1.1 million for us, that's a 10% increase. And I will go back to what I said earlier, that's a low increase compared to what the rest of the communities around us are facing. I heard of a 22% increase in a community, I heard of a 20% increase. So, they're unanticipated because we, for years, have settled and been very satisfied with our three to four percent increases that we would include for health insurance. But in three years, it's been 16, five, 16, five, and now 10 over the, and that's no one's fault, it's just the rising cost of some of those things. So, I appreciate that question and I'm happy to answer in more detail if you have any more specific questions that, you know, send them to me and I'm happy to be prepared for them.
One year, let us not forget, one year we had no health insurance increase and we got a waiver on our, whatever it's called.
I also can just point out one more thing, we had a 14% increase in OSD private school tuitions two years ago. That the money, it compounds, it doesn't go away. When you have that 14%, it remains, plus the new 5% that comes in the next year, plus the new 4% that does. So, those are some of the costs that we're facing.
And when you say private school tuition, you mean the private special education schools that are licensed by the state, not private schools?
Correct. And regulated by the OSD, which is the, I don't know what it stands for, but the people that raise the money, so. Operational Services Division, right, they're the ones who set the tuition rates. That was a $900,000 increase to Beverly Public Schools in one year. And that compounds and it, you know, it remains no matter where we go.
Okay, I saw Ms. Robinson saying, then Mayor Cahill, you're good, okay.
Thank you. So I agree with what President Abel said, we do have to be comfortable with having difficult conversations and, I mean, I've had great conversations with probably everybody in this room and learned from everybody, but I also think it's important to be brave enough to disagree when you think things might not be good for kids. So, I guess what I have to say, I think it was hard to hear, you know, you said you want to hear things beforehand, it was hard to hear that, like, the things you think are one way, but then you hear something different. So for instance, tonight was the first time that I heard that going from two to three-person teams at the middle school. I think that's important information that kind of got thrown at us and I don't know a whole lot, I don't know a whole lot about that, that happening. And that's an important conversation that I think we should, we should be talking about. It's also hard to hear that cuts were coming from retirement and attrition and then all of a sudden, there are a whole bunch of people who are suddenly not good fits and I understand that that's a personnel issue, but I'd like to know, are those positions going to be filled with brand-new people next year? And is that really, is that really good for students?
So I make it a practice and a rule not to discuss personnel issues in public because I do think that, you know, hiring and rehiring are the decisions that are, you know, are the purview of the administration. And so, you know, I would choose not to have, put people in a position where the conversation is uncomfortable, but I assure you that, and at some level, you have to put your trust in me as a superintendent that I'm working with the administrators and that we're making decisions that we think are right for kids. And so, again, and I'll go back to the three-person team, we can have more discussion, we've had a three-person team before, Hannah School operates on a three-person team right now in fourth grade, so it's not an unknown entity. But when you have 14, the option, the alternative is to hire two more teachers or to cut down and have 25 kids in a classroom instead of the 22 or 23 that we, you know, that we try to target, 23 or 24. Those are, we have, you have to do the math, right? Every teacher has a section of 24 kids, but you want to, that part of that would be adding two teachers for those 24 kids because that's the model that we have. So, again, all good conversations, happy to have them, except for I choose not to engage in personnel discussions, so.
No, that's fine, I just, a lot of people came forth saying that they were the people and I think they feel pretty comfortable saying that. And it's hard to hear because, like, I've, I know that personally, I've had conversations about some of these people with people in this room who said they're, these are wonderful, those are wonderful people and wonderful teachers and you're so lucky.
I think all of our teachers are wonderful people.
You're so lucky, yeah, same. But I just feel like it's not, it's not, I don't think people feel like they're being lied to, I feel like there's just, people feel like we're, sometimes our school committee and our administration are omitting a lot of important information that, and I think that's become, I just think that's become an issue. And just that, back to that slide, I guess, can we just go back to it, the one that Lirinda was talking about?
Social, emotional, support positions.
Yeah, so, I just want to understand that better. So we, when did we start investing in, in social, emotional support? Like, does it look like we did this like more, I don't know, I'm just kind of confused about it.
I just want to be clear that that graph shows percent change, so I don't want it to be misrepresented by the fact that there's small text at the bottom to indicate that we were starting at zero in 1718. It's percent change over time, so that means that the zero at the bottom there is the base year for the analysis and comparison. In 1718, there were 20 FTEs across the district dedicated to social, emotional, mental health. So I just want to be clear that it's not, that was not the starting point, that's just small font.
Yeah, I can't see.
So we have an increase.
What you said was, I'd have to, I'd have to really write that down and think about it, but.
So what this basically says is between 2021 and the, following the start of the pandemic and beyond, we have added 18 positions or 16.8? We went up to, at one point we were up to 19 and then now we're down to 16.8, right? So we've added 16.8 positions.
So I guess my question is, are we done with invest, are we done with investing in like mental health right now? Like, is that, like, as far as we can go? Because we've, we've taken away a lot of mental health student-facing positions.
I think that what we did, if we're clear, was we looked at, one, the biggest increase came when we added the City Connects program and because we were investing in a partnership with BC and following with fidelity their model, we followed the number of full-time City Connect staff, but their model was not designed for districts that had full-time school adjustment counselors in their buildings already. But we went with it because we wanted to introduce the model and make sure that we had the constructs of that program built in and really well-done. And now what we're doing is taking a look and saying, where are their overlaps? I'll give you an example, at the high school, we had a full-time City Connects. The Boston College program isn't built for high school, but we said we wanted to catch up, we wanted to try to get a whole class review for every student in the district, we did that. The roles and responsibilities of the City Connects, it's not the person, that person is moving into a different role, but that, that role can be absorbed into other areas, that's our opinion. We, as administrators, have to make some tough decisions and some calls around how we can make services happen and what they can look like. We don't anticipate that there'll be a drop in any of the student outcomes, we're going to incorporate them into positions that already exist. So, you know, that was at one level. At a couple of buildings, we had full-time school adjustment counselors already, we decided to go to a 0.5 position in those buildings, we're not eliminating it, but we believe that we can meet the need that we have by going to a 0.5 position. We came in with a very full scale of what was advised, we worked within it for three years, we made some observations and we took into account where areas, what the feedback came and we've made decisions based on that. So, we're not eliminating, you know, a series of mental health people that are, that we don't have a plan for, so. I don't know how else to explain it to you, but that seems to be one way to talk about it.
Okay, Mayor Cahill has had his hand up and then we'll call on Dr. McKenzie de Franza.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Trurocek said some of what I wanted to say and that was on the three-teacher team model, that we have had three teacher teams in the past here at the middle school. You say we have one now at Hannah.
Fourth grade model at Hannah right now is a three-person team.
And so not tonight, I'm ready to fall over, I don't know how much longer we're going to go, but not tonight, but maybe when we meet next, you can share a little bit of, when we do have a three-teacher team, how is it structured, what does it look like, you know, and so forth. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate that. For those who are not in classrooms, it may not, you know, they may not understand what all this means in terms of moving parts, so I do think it'd be great to just have that clarification. I wanted to just go back to the graph, just more as a illustrative point, not this specifically. But we know that during the pandemic, we had a spike in need and we had a spike in response and we also had a spike in funding for those positions. So everything aligned really nicely in terms of this trajectory looking like it does. What I'm wondering is, if we were to project based on what we are proposing now, could we do a projection that actually takes us beyond this last year that says, if we look at, you know, looking at the next school year, where would that line be? And do we have a sense of the ratio? So for example, clearly the trajectory says that we are hiring more people, but vis-à-vis students, if we looked at the ratio, how does that change? And so I'm just curious about that, but in any other place where we're making a shift, if there's a way to show, just assure us, like, what does that ratio look like? I think that would be really helpful, it's sort of like, you know, the class size discussion, but it would be good to just see, we've had this great increase, but we had the funds to go with it and all the other things. But, you know, all our children, even if they're not, they weren't in the high school there, I mean, they're still coming through, those who've experienced the pandemic. And so it'd be good to just know, what will it really look like if we just stretched out this graph a little bit more or in any other areas like that?
I think we may have reached a good breaking point for the discussion this evening as Dr. Trurocek has requested. If there are additional areas of conversation, for instance, what does the three-person team look like or what was the data behind this, et cetera? Please make sure that you provide Dr. Trurocek those questions in advance of our next meeting, which will be on the 22nd at 7:00 PM. I have one more agenda item, if the committee would indulge. The Chair, I would like, well, I have to read it. The Chair is voting to meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A for Purpose 3 and not to return to open session. Purpose 3 is to discuss strategy with respect to and in preparation for collective bargaining with units A, B, C, and/or any individual contracts because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. Again, not to return to open session.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Lirinda Visnick?
Yes.
And Rachael Abel?
Yes.
Thank you, Bev Cam, thank you for everyone that was joining us in person, I wish you a good evening and we'll see you again here next week.